Councilmember Fun.
Here.
Councilmember Papin.
I know she's here.
Councilmember Papin.
I think you're still on mute. She knows, she's looking. Councilwoman Papin is here, thumbs up. Did you see that Elaine? I saw it.
No.
But she did thumbs up. She's working on sound. Go ahead.
Yep, she's good. Okay, she indicated, yep.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Present.
All councilmembers are present on the February 23rd, 2021 city council meeting.
And before we do pledge of allegiance, did you want to tell people how they raise their hands? Or do you want to do that after pledge?
We can do it after pledge.
Okay, very good. All right, if you could all please rise and join me in the pledge. How come I have no picture? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, City Clerk, please let everyone know how we're running the meeting. We have a lot of visitors tonight.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. If you would like to speak tonight on an agenda item, please wait until the agenda item is called, and please raise your hand through the Zoom. If you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. However, any items that are not on the agenda, please wait until it's public communication to raise your hand to speak on anything not on the agenda. And once again, through the Zoom feature, raising your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. And our first item on the agenda is a presentation or commendation to Peninsula Volunteers Meals on Wheels. And I see that we have Peter Olson, the CEO of Peninsula Volunteers with us. And I didn't see Betsy Flanagan, Becky Flanagan, but we'll call you up right after. So with that, Peninsula Volunteers, Inc., or PVI, is our Meals on Wheels here for the city of Millbrae. They provided home delivery of meals to San Mateo County residents since 1977, and began serving in Millbrae a couple of years ago. Whereas PVI Meals on Wheels is committed to increase food security and access to nutritious food, helping older adults and adults with disabilities to live nourished lives with independence and dignity. And whereas every week, the Peninsula Volunteers deliver over 3,000 hot nutritious meals to primarily homebound members who are unable to cook and shop for themselves. Fifty-four percent of the seniors live alone, 20% have no other source of food than the one meal PVI Meals on Wheels provides each day. And whereas PVI Meals on Wheels do more than deliver meals and focus on nourishing the whole person, community members can also receive important safety and wellness checks, nutrition counseling, and referral to needed community services. And whereas Meals on Wheels has continued to serve the community throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas Meals on Wheels is dedicated to serving the community and meeting the growing demands for home delivery services, now we therefore, therefore we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Peninsula Volunteers, Inc. Meals on Wheels for their commitment and contribution to our community. And I'm really happy to have Meals on Wheels with us as they move into March. And I will let Mr. Olson talk about the events that Meals on Wheels Peninsula Volunteers do in March. So Mr. Olson, if you'd like to join us.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you so much for the commendation. You guys are an incredible partner to be able to take care of the people in our community who are most at risk and most of need for food, not only during the pandemic, but always. I've met a number of you over the years, and coming from you, this commendation means a lot. As was mentioned, Meals on Wheels in March, we have, it's called, it's March for Meals. It's also been known as Community Champions. At one point, it was Mayor's for Meals. This has taken on all sorts of different names over the years, but the bottom line is it's a time to be able to celebrate our community partners, much like yourself, and to be able to get out and provide some one-on-one interaction with the people that we serve and the people in our community. And with us tonight is Becky Flanagan. She's the Director for Meals on Wheels. And I got to say that none of this is possible without her hard work and energy. So Becky, why don't you say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. And I've been here, I think I was just probably hiding out on your second screen or something. But thank you so much for this recognition. It does mean so much to have all the cities we serve behind us. We are now delivering 160,000 meals a year. You know, we've increased delivery due to this huge demand that came on from the pandemic. That's about 750 meals a day. Last year, 5,700 meals went to residents of Millbrae. There were 47 residents of your city who received meals. And I want to tell you about one of them. So Bronny has been receiving meals for about three years now. He's 85 years old, and he's been a resident of your city for 50 years. He spent his career as a sheet metal worker who specialized in building high rises and hospitals. And when he retired, he loved to dance and golf. And about four years ago, that all changed. He had surgery, and he had a really bad reaction to the pain medication. And so he became hospitalized. He couldn't walk. He lost a lot of weight. And he finally was able to be discharged, and they sent him home with really strict instructions about what to eat. And he lived alone. He couldn't even shop for himself. He can't cook for himself. He ended up in a bad situation. He was re-hospitalized three times for dehydration and other complications. Finally, one day, he saw our delivery van, and he called that number on the side, and we started delivering meals to him. And he's now, he's like our biggest fan. He says, "Forget about the salt and sugar. I don't need it with Meals on Wheels." So he's bragging to all his friends, and he says it's all filling, and he loves the meals. He's regained a lot of his mobility, and he really credits us with allowing him to live at home safely. He doesn't think he could do it without the meals. He loves the weekend meals. About a third of our clients have no other options for weekends, so we give those clients extra meals on Fridays, so they have meals through the weekend. He says they're great. And he'll admit, he says he's slowed down a lot this year, but he said he looks good because of the meals from Meals on Wheels. So, you know, he's just one. There's so many stories like that. And right now, seniors are relying from us not only on that nutritious meal, but that contact. For many of our clients, like Peter said, this is sometimes the only meal they get in the day. It's also often the only contact they have, and they're really lonely and isolated right now. So we really, really appreciate you kind of kicking off March for Meals for us, you know? This is our first kind of big recognition for it as we get the word out in March. And I look forward, I know I've got, I was going to say Anne scheduled for a ride along, but no, wellness calls. So, yeah, thank you for your support.
And I encourage all of you to, I encourage everyone to participate. You'll be getting an email from us if you haven't already. It's, it's hard to describe in words the impact that this service has on people. And for you to have the opportunity to talk one-on-one and just get some insight, and be prepared to stay online for sometimes for up to 20 minutes, and just to have a joyful conversation with somebody that just really appreciates everything that we do, everything that you do. And again, it, this is how communities are supposed to behave. This is how we take care of one another, and I invite everybody to join in and have that opportunity to chat with them one-on-one.
Thank you. And before I call the other council members, I think it was three years ago, I went down to Menlo Park. You had a council member mayor's event. We got to see the kitchens where everything is done, how you nutritionally balance everything. And then I went on a ride along, and we did five members here in Millbrae. And at the time, I know COVID might have changed it, but at the time, if there are people here in Millbrae who have a little bit of time to give over meals, you can pick up the meals now in San Bruno. You don't have to go all the way down to Menlo Park anymore. But that's another thing that I hope my fellow council members, it was really incredible going out with Meals on Wheels. I actually ended up at a house of some of my old high school classmates' parents. So it can be really beautiful. It's really beautiful on that. And now, again, with even more isolation, it's very important. Council members, do you have anything you'd like to say? I'm looking for raised hands here, or flash me, or wave. Okay, with that, again, please, council members, look for that invitation. Anybody in Millbrae, if you've got a little bit of volunteer time, they are looking for volunteers. It's through Peninsula Volunteer, and March is that month. And I'm sure they wouldn't mind a donation if you are looking for a way to feed people here in Millbrae. I mean, this is one way you can donate, and you know that the money is coming back to people in Millbrae. So I thank you so much, and keep safe with everything you are doing, and we'll see you at the Mayor's Coordinating Council on Thursday.
Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
And I'm moving us along because we had some definite time certains, and we're a little bit behind. And again, I apologize. If we could get Roseanne Faust, President and CEO of San Mateo County Economic Development Association, what we call SAMCDA, and she's going to give us an update on business on a day, a day before we're moving into red. So Ms. Faust, I'm so glad you could join us, and please take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Oliva, City Manager Williams, the entire council. I want to thank you for having me here this evening. I also want to commend you for your recognition of Meals on Wheels. Just a fabulous organization, and so incredible, and so just thank you, and very appreciative. I want to go through these slides very quickly to leave a little bit of time for questions. So this is the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program that opened yesterday. And if we can go to the next slide, and Mayor Schneider, I'd like to compliment you on the staff in Millbrae. Elisa Tierney, Elaine Tran, Darcy Smith, just fabulous to work with. So I really want to acknowledge what a great staff, along with your City Manager Williams. So the program objectives, very straightforward. Support restaurants, breweries, and wineries that have suffered the economic impact of COVID-19. We know they all have. This is a direct grant, up to $10,000, and it's to local non-corporate establishments in a very streamlined manner. If we move to the next slide. So the timeline and applicant assistance. This shows the timeline opened yesterday at noon. It's open for two weeks. It closes on March 8th at 12:00 noon. This is not first come, first served. We want to be very clear on that. We want to allow, it's a pre-application. It is very simple and straightforward. More information in four languages, English, Spanish, Tagalog, and Chinese, are available at smcstrong.org. There is a support hotline for application assistance, again, in the four languages. The numbers are on your screen, and you can also email the program director at restaurantrelief@smgov.org. So if we move to the next slide, one of the things I should have mentioned earlier is how this grant program started is SAMCDA was approached back in the fall by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, who is, their headquarters is located in downtown Redwood City, and they wanted to support restaurants. And so we began conversations with them. We brought in Chamber San Mateo County. And then they told us that they wanted to seed this fund with a million dollars for the cities in the southern part of the county where they have their footprint. We took that million dollars, and we went to the county of San Mateo, and that's where we ended up with another million-three to support all of our cities in San Mateo County. So not first come, first served, again, complete a pre-application. There's no uploading of any financial documents, nothing. A very simple pre-application. All the pre-applications that are qualified, and that means filling out the application. They are put into a pool at the end of the process, and then through a very transparent computer algorithm, they'll be separated, and then a lottery system will result in grants for all the jurisdictions within the county, and then documentation will be asked for. And then the fully approved businesses will be provided to the San Mateo Credit Union, who will disperse the funds. So if we move to the next slide, this shows the pre-application form includes, very simple, name, address, name of applicant, name of business, name of applicant, email, phone number, the applicant's relationship to an establishment, they're the sole proprietor. There's optional information, which we are really looking to collect more from an informational, and how do we build more programs to help all of our businesses? And so this is optional, women, veteran, minority, LGBTQ+, owned, race, gender, age. But again, that doesn't preclude you from going through the application, filling it out with what you're comfortable with in the first part, and then skipping the optional portion. If we go to the next slide, this is an application. When you pull it up online, you'll see you can drop down. You start in English, but there's Spanish, Chinese, and Tagalog. So these items are not required to complete this application, but if you are selected, you'll be required to provide an IRS Form W-9, County of San Mateo Environmental Health Permit, a city or town business license, if applicable, because some of our jurisdictions don't use a business license, and a photo ID of the establishment owner, partner, or principals. If we move to the next slide, so the grants, full-service restaurants, brick-and-mortar physical location within San Mateo County, and a full-service kitchen onsite, a brewery that is an ABC Type 23 license, and a winery that is an ABC Type II Wine Grower License. So more detailed information in each of these categories is on smcstrong.org. It's all included in the FAQs, Frequently Asked Questions sections. So if we move to the next slide, what types of businesses do not qualify for the grant? So incomplete application, failure to meet the eligibility criteria, if it's a corporate-owned franchise, if it's an establishment that operates in a hotel without a separate business license, and then also ineligible businesses are pop-ups, food trucks, home-based businesses, catering company, cottage food operators, and micro home kitchen operations. Those who received small business grants in the spring are eligible to apply. If any, there was just one Millbrae business that received a San Mateo County small grant in the fall when we were able to requalify from the spring, another 130 grant applications based in order of received. And then anyone that's received over $200,000 in revenue from the Great Plates Program, another excellent operation. The Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, that was targeted to specific zip codes in San Mateo County, and Millbrae wasn't one of those locations, so that criteria doesn't apply in this case. If we move to the next slide, Frequently Asked Questions. So I wanted you to have a screenshot of where you can find the FAQs. If we go to the next slide, so this is your time to ask questions. We are coming to you tonight because we believe that this program will be oversubscribed. We want you to know that as you did in the spring, you allocated $100,000 at that time. So an additional 10 Millbrae businesses receive small business grants, and we are extremely grateful. If you do have funds that you would like to put towards the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Grant Program, those funds would stay in the city of Millbrae. Based on the population allocation and the fact of the additional 1.3 million, Millbrae is in line to, there's allocated five Restaurant Brewery and Wine Grants under this program, if the businesses are qualified. So just to kind of give you some numbers, there were 13 grants given between Measure K and Millbrae Funds in the spring. There was one given in the fall, because the San Mateo Credit Union went back and took the next 100 applicants, because we were way oversubscribed in the spring. And then we have, based on population application, five available for this next round. So any additional funds that you'd be willing to support? You've been an incredible community in terms of pushing out the information, being supportive of all of our newsletters and what we put out. And I want to thank you and your team more than I really words can say at this point. We really appreciate your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Oliva, and then Councilwoman Papin.
Roseanne, thank you for acknowledging our staff, because I know how difficult this has been for them. But I just want to acknowledge you too, and I'm very impressed by how you stepped up and led everybody in the county to all these programs. I have sent more people to get help and just write through SAMCDA, and they got answers whether or not they fit the programs or the criteria. They were not let down by your group. So I thank you very, very much, and I fully support, and I will be helping out with whatever I can do for your funds. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Oliva.
Thank you. Councilwoman Papin.
Ditto all that. Roseanne, you and your staff have been spectacular, and thank you so much for working with our city as well. And I want to encourage everybody out there, if you go to a local restaurant, make sure they know about this. We have to get the word out. We need to get back on track here. We had the Outdoor Supply Hardware open today, so let's just keep the momentum moving in the right direction. And bless you all, and we'll be helping out too, Roseanne, as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members, before we take comments from the public? Okay.
Mayor, real quick, if I can, just chime in here, just real quick from a city manager's perspective. Roseanne, my hat's off to you, everything that's said, an amazing job. I don't know if you've had any sleep, you know, this last year. I also see Dawn Cecil's on the phone, in the meeting as well, and you two are amazing. So thank you for everything that you've done and the support, not only for Millbrae, but throughout the county. I mean, just really, you know, the example of what the entire country and the world should be in San Mateo. And so, again, my compliments to you on an outstanding job. So thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, could you please, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Roseanne.
No, I was just saying thank you very much. Your kind words are just beyond generous, so thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Please, Councilman.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Roseanne. Thank you for, very appreciated your hard work here and helping out all the restaurant owners and breweries and all the hospitality businesses that, you know, that are just going through such a difficult time during the pandemic, and working through with all the, some of the local other nonprofit organizations as well. I know PCB has been working with you guys and trying to promote your program here in town and throughout the peninsula. So thank you for all you do, and, you know, you really help out businesses and help these employees to keep their job. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Fun, and I mentioned PCBA before some of you joined. Former Councilmember and Mayor Lee, they've just been incredible. PCBA cannot say enough. So thank you for your support of them. They're just a great partner.
Excellent. And you mentioned that on our elected officials briefing, and I'm going to circle back to that at the end. Elaine, could we let former Mayor Lee onboard?
I won't need to. Just, Roseanne, I just want to thank you and Dawn for including access to people who don't speak English very well. It's, a lot of our businesses are English-challenged, and so that really helps the community. And also, I just want to give, you know, tip my hat off to you and your staff and Dawn for putting this program together on the fly very quickly. It was done professionally, and it had a huge impact very quickly. So I can't say how much gratitude we have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, former Mayor Lee. Ms. Faust, on the call last week, so for the public, every other week or twice a month now, elected officials are briefed by the county, and quite often, Roseanne's group, SAMCDA, gives us updates on what's going on. You gave us a message that we were supposed to do as we go to our businesses, and I wanted to have you close with that message. But yesterday, all of our council, we got an email from one of our businesses, a good, terrific community partner. They're in the health services, Rush Cycles, so a cycling place. And after a year, they just can't hang on. I know the program you talked about tonight was directed at food. I think, and I don't want to share a business's private information, but are there still some chances that the businesses that have tried for a year, they're on their last legs? What can they do? And in this case, for Rush Cycle, great, terrific community partner with us.
So Mayor Schneider, thank you very much, and thank you for referring them over to us. I was actually going through all of the different financial grants that we have listed on samceda.org. We have a section for that, and I was going through to try to figure out what is still open or applicable. That's very cute. Open and applicable for the business, and also looking at the Cal Relief Grants. And then talking with my colleagues at Nova Works, which is our Workforce Investment Board, and then at Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, to see where we could send them, because, and see what type of financial incentives we could hook them up with. Because we know the need is great. We know that there have been businesses really dipping into their savings and reaching out to others. So I'm trying to put together a menu of potential opportunities for them and get that to them. So it was something I was working on earlier today, but I'll keep following up on it.
Thank you. Thank you. That's lovely.
And I know you asked the question on the, what I actually said to everyone on the call, and it's really a simple message. Go to your local business, thank them. Pick up the phone, call them. Let them know that you appreciate them, that you are there to support and listen. You might not have all the answers, but I can tell you, kind words go a long way, especially for our very small businesses. And so I really just encourage everyone. I've been shopping and eating local. I may need to dial back a bit on the eating, but I'll do as much as I possibly can.
I know you're down in Redwood City, but we have our brand-new Outdoor Supply Hardware. So if you feel like shopping, we just were down there today. It's the first time I've been in retail other than CVS or Walgreens in months, and it was, golly, it was just fun. Anyway, I think those words were beautiful, and the message to all of us is thank our local businesses. It's been a really, really rough 12 months on that. So I thank you. I thank you for anything. I don't see any other questions. I know you have another meeting to run to. I'm very grateful that you came and spoke to us.
Thank you very much for having me. Have a good evening.
Take care. Keep safe. Okay, City Clerk, next up, this was a night that we have presentations. We have the Millbrae Leo's Youth Club, and they're going to be talking about their project, Plastic Bags to Park Benches. And we have tonight with us, we have Leo Budget Director Kayan, Leo Secretary David. You can see Kayan and David right there on the screen. And we have, I think we have Leo Project Director Isabel, who is also on our Youth Advisory Committee. So Leo's, if you are ready, please take it away.
I just wanted to say thank you to the City Council for having us tonight. We're representing the Millbrae Leo's Club, and this video is just to push out our ongoing project that we're having right now. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to raise your hand, and we'll address them after the video, and we hope you guys enjoy.
Hey, Kayan, why did you need me today?
Oh, hey, David. Let me show you my presentation. So what do these have in common?
Um, I don't know.
Plastic.
Oh, what does that have to do with anything?
Well, we are filming a video for our plastic bench project.
Oh, you mean that thing where the Millbrae Leo's Club is partnering with Trex Lumber to provide a plastic recycling program, where the goal is to collect a minimum of 500 pounds of plastic? Then Trex Lumber will give the city of Millbrae one plastic bench for every 500 pounds collected.
Hold on, hold on, David. You can't just jump into the script like that.
Why?
We have to say a joke or something to lighten up the mood.
Well, do you have a joke?
No.
Oh, I have one. What do you call a plastic artist?
What?
Vincent Van Lego.
That was not funny.
Um, anyways, do you know what happens to the plastic after gathered?
After plastic is gathered together, it is then transported to a grocery distribution center. Plastic is bailed and unloaded on a trailer to be shipped to Trex for recycling. Finally, after 500 pounds of plastic, we will receive a bench made out of plastic lumber.
Wow, that bench looks so cool. But we have to start collecting, what can be recycled for this project?
I'm glad you asked.
Kayn?
Some examples of plastics that can be recycled from your local stores include produce bags, ice bags, and store bags. Plastic that can be recycled from your pantry include Ziploc bags and other recyclable bags, cereal box bags, case overwrapped bags, and more. Plastics that can be recycled from your front door include newspaper sleeves, dry cleaning bags, bubble wrap, and plastic e-commerce mailers.
Some examples of plastics that cannot be recycled are candy wrappers, degradable or compostable bags, chip bags, paper envelopes with bubble wrap, plastic film, gloves and other protective wear, Mylar bags, Tiffic bags, polypropylene, six-pack rings, frozen food bags, and pre-washed salad mix bags.
Okay, now I have all my plastic. What should I do now?
Well, you can drop off your plastic at 406 Palm Avenue Millbrae, which is Lion Ann's house. We are also working on having more drop-off locations in more public spaces. The deadline to drop off your plastic is June.
Great. Well, we should drop off the plastic to her house now.
Well, we should.
Make sure to put your plastic in these bins located outside her house.
For more information, visit this link. And if you have any questions, reach out to us at our email, president@millbraeleosclub.org.
Every bit of plastic will contribute to our cause.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Bye.
Bye.
So I will add, and hopefully we still have Kayn and, and David. Here in the background here is the box that you would have seen. There'll be two of these at City Hall by tomorrow morning. So if you see this box right here with the label, with the distribution on there, there'll be one by the both sets of double doors. They'll be under, they'll, under the overhang, so they'll still stay dry. So you don't have to go to that person at 406 Palm Avenue. If you do not want to, you can go right down to City Hall. With that, Kayn or David, do you want to talk about what's going to happen, when we're going to do our first weighing? When, what, where will a bench go if we collect 500 pounds of plastic bags within a six-month period? Kayn? Elaine, can you unmute Kayn?
Yes, and I'm not sure if David Locke is trying to speak, so I'm just gonna unmute them both.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, um, so you're asking where would the bench go?
Right.
Um, we were, we don't have like everything down, but we were planning to have the bench down in Millbrae Park, I believe. And yeah, so the deadline is June. We are trying to work together with Safeway. And for where Trex will pick up the plastic. Yeah. And.
Very good. Kayn, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, you can be sure to, if you have a lot of plastic, you can put it in one big plastic bag so it can be dropped off easily.
This is how a lot of it has been arriving at my house. If you get a newspaper, the newspaper bags are really perfect. And you just kind of roll up all the other plastic bags like bread bags and cereal bags and the bags around bottled water, if you're buying bottled water. It works really well. They've asked us to make sure that it's, it's see-through. And this isn't supposed to be the mayor's show. Actually, the Leo's Club are working with the Millbrae Community Enhancement Committee and the Millbrae Park and Recs Commission, Park and Recs Commission with park staff will be identifying locations where the, the bench and hopefully multiple benches will go most likely along the spur trail. And if you've walked the spur trail during COVID, you'll notice there aren't a lot of places to sit down if you get tired or you just want to stop and chat with friends socially distanced, of course. But that's where we're hoping that the benches are going to go help spread the city's budget because our budget and COVID will be tight. So the bed, the, the Leo's project is helping the city in difficult economic times and recycling at the same time. Are there any questions from the public? Okay, with that, the Leo's will have this up on their website. If anyone watching this has questions, it's really confusing what plastic can and can't work. So always feel free to reach out to the Leo's. They will help explain to you what can, what works really well and what, what shouldn't go in the bin. And then as you can see, when it's all nice and clean like this, and this coming Sunday will be our first weigh-in. So anybody curious about how many pounds we have been collecting during the beta test, we'll know on Sunday. Okay. Oh, I see a question. Councilman Hollibur.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to everyone from the Leo's for organizing this project. This is a wonderful project to be able to make a long-term difference in our community. I think just a couple suggestions. I don't know if anyone's reached out to the new outdoor supply hardware. Maybe they have some type of plastic. I don't, maybe some type of packaging with, you know, the pallets of merchandise that came in that might be able to be donated. I know you mentioned Safeway. I think they do have a plastic bag box by the entrance. So I don't know if they're, they're collecting from that or somebody from the Leo's can collect out of that box. But great job and hopefully we'll see that bench sometime soon.
I, I think OSH is a collection point. Safeway and Home Depots are the collection points that Trex has identified around California. But if we could get OSH, that would be super. I love that suggestion. Leo's, put that on the to-do list. Any other questions? Questions from the public? Okay, Leo, I, I had received some questions about how can you touch plastic in the time of COVID? We are using all COVID precautions. The plastic sits for three or more days, sometimes for several weeks before it's getting bundled up. And gloves are worn, masks are worn, and hands are washed afterwards. So we're not really worried about COVID transmission or for that matter, the common cold because we're taking all of the COVID precautions right now. So if there's parents out there worried about their kids, we think we've gotten taken care of it and there has been very little transmission or no transmission from plastic bags to people that has been reported the last we checked. So if you have questions like that though, please send them to the Leo's so that they can develop what's called an FAQ. The exciting part of this project is the Leo's haven't been able to do a lot of their projects with COVID. But with this project, they have been doing all the project management, all of the contact and communication with Trex, attempted conversations with Safeway. This is their project and them developing their project management skills. So as your advisor and I see your other advisor, Michael Kelly, we are you and very grateful for all of the time and effort you've put in. So thank you. Okay, we'll see you on Sunday.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We gotta move along, please.
Okay, next up, and if we have Doris Morse. Doris, I'm looking. She's called in. Okay, next on our list is proclamation in March 8th, 2021 as International Women's Day. It's celebrated globally each year on March 8th. It is a time to reflect on women's achievements and to celebrate the contributions women have made and continue to make. And whereas women play a vital role in shaping the social, economic, cultural, and political development within our communities, this day serves as an important reminder of the progress women have made throughout the years as a push towards equality and not only in government and politics, but also academia, athletics. And whereas Kamala Harris, the first female vice president of the United States, is paving the way for many girls and women. As a woman of color, holding the highest level elected office, Vice President Harris symbolizes women's evolving role in United States government. And whereas locally, Josephine Wa was a former Millbrae resident and an active seroptimist member who strives to improve the lives of women and girls. She also led the effort to stop a highway from splitting the city of Millbrae in half. That is today, Josephine played an integral part in assuring residents can use the spur trail property as a recreational area. And whereas our county, our country has seen a rise in powerful movements which have celebrated women's achievements, but also brought to light the challenges women still face. By educating and encouraging people to make a change, we can continue to make a positive impact for women. And whereas International Women's Day highlights the impact and progress women have made towards advancing opportunities in our society. Inspirational women worldwide have broken barriers and continue to open new opportunities for women, present and in the future. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2021 as International Women's Day. And if we have, Doris was accepting for us tonight, former mayor Doris Morse. Do we have Doris? If not, I believe we're going to donate the, the commendation to the Millbrae Historical Society. With everything that we're all dealing with, we haven't really had time to celebrate that we finally broke the, the glass barrier into the presidency, vice presidency. So it's been an incredible start to 2021. If there's any, council members, any comments? Okay, well, thank you. Moving on, Elaine, can we pull up? And if we can get Felicia Lee Cardenas, I know I saw Felicia here earlier.
I am here. I'm here.
Oh, there you are, Felicia. Elaine, I'm sorry, I can't read that. There we go. Perfect. Hello, Felicia. A couple of weeks ago, both myself and Councilwoman Fung were able to attend the Women in Courage event where Jackie Spear gave out an award to one of our own as well as a scholarship. So I'm going to read the commendation and we're so happy and so lovely that, that you received this. Whereas Felicia Lee Cardenas is the recipient of the prestigious philanthropic Venture Cap, Venture Foundation's Women of Courage Award, inspired by the lifetime work of Congressman Jackie Spear. And whereas the award honors women who live, work, or serve others in San Mateo County and demonstrate courage, made an impact, and exemplify the characteristics of compassion, resiliency, and integrity in an effort to make the world a better place. And whereas Felicia Lee Cardenas overcame a traumatic childhood, the loss of both parents and leaving home when she was 19. Felicia worked multiple jobs to complete her college education, earning a Bachelor of Science in Justice Studies from San Jose State University. And whereas Felicia Lee Cardenas has served our community as the program coordinator for the San Mateo County Sheriff's Activity League, known as SAL. And now as the community service officer at the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Felicia Lee Cardenas has promoted public engagement throughout community events such as National Night Out, Beats and Brews, and SAL Play Streets events. And whereas Felicia Lee Cardenas is committed in helping underserved children in the community as a positive engaged role model. As the first to attend college in her family of seven siblings, she is determined to show what is possible. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Felicia Lee Cardenas for her contributions to the community.
Thank you all.
If you'd like to say a few words, Felicia.
Yeah, first of all, I would just like to say thank you all. It's been a blessing to work for San Mateo County and even more so in Millbrae, especially with everything going on right now. It's still great to see how lively Millbrae is. Just being on the streets and being able to talk to individuals and, you know, I think communication is most important right now, more so than it has ever been. We all want that communication. We all want that engagement. And I see it in the city of Millbrae. So I'm just thankful to be able to work and give back in any way that I can. So thank you for having me and your guys' city. I appreciate it.
Well, it, it was a pleasure working with you on a couple of the projects too. So I'm betting that Chief Kunkel has a few words.
I'll, I'll be brief. The Millbrae Police Bureau and the San Mateo County Sheriff's Officers are very proud of the strong women in our ranks. We have women in every rank up to and including assistant sheriff, which was among the highest ranks in our office. And our Millbrae Police Bureau, we are wrought with strong women and it's fantastic. From my assistant to our records people, to our deputy sheriffs, to our sergeants ranks who lead our deputies in the street, to up-and-comers like Felicia who have a very bright future with us. We're working hard to get her onto her next role, which would be as a correction officer. I worked very hard to get her to come to Millbrae from SAL. That was difficult because it was a role she really loved. She loves working with the public and she's a fantastic public servant. I'm particularly impressed with this award because this came from outside the sheriff's office. A CEO recognized her and her struggle and what she's done. And this is a win for everybody. And she's exemplary of the fantastic women we have at our bureau and she's the pride of Millbrae and I couldn't be happier. So thank you for honoring her with us tonight.
Thank you. Um, council, any council comments?
I have one.
Mayor Schneider. Please go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So Felicia, I had the honor to watch you at the SAL board and working at SAL and now in Millbrae. And I'm, I have just a couple thoughts and that is on March 8th, when it's National
Oh dear.
Day, it as a woman. And I can't wait to celebrate the next achievement for you to, in the, in the near future. And I'm very, very proud of you and can't wait to watch and think about you on March 8th, thinking of women in power. Go, girl.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, Felicia, don't be a stranger. Part of, you, you've joined the ranks, you've joined the ranks of the sheriffs, but you're also part of Woman Good. We're here for you. You know, always feel free and feel comfortable reaching out to us. As I said, it was a pleasure and, and I loved everything. And, and the Vice Mayor should know, every time SAL comes and helps with the city of Millbrae project, it's always been outstanding. My mother loves the soccer when you play. It's always so great to see little ones. They don't know each other, but you, SAL brings the soccer program and they just play and it's just good for the heart. So someday soon, we're going to be able to gather again. Anyway, good luck to you on everything and, and again, don't be a stranger.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, Elaine, it, it, we may have, I, I can see that we have a couple of board members from Self-Help for the Elderly here. So we'll read the commendation and then if you would like to say some words, please. So, um, this is a sad one, but also an amazing one for an amazing woman. Whereas Ching Ming Koo, also known to many as Roz, was a passionate community leader, volunteer, inspirational role model, and cherished friend. And whereas Roz obtained her bachelor's degree in economics at UC Berkeley and joined the workforce shortly after the birth of her children in the 1950s, when few women were working. And whereas while Roz served as an executive at MBT Associates, an award-winning architectural firm in San Francisco, she devoted time to community service. And whereas Roz was committed in serving the elderly population, she spearheaded significant projects involving construction of senior care facilities and scholarships for girls. And whereas Roz has led the effort to establish Self-Help for the Elderly in San Mateo and expanded the program to Millbrae in 2018, providing our residents with meals, services, and activities. And whereas Roz's vast accomplishments have left a long-lasting impact within the people's lives she had touched through her philanthropy, through her philanthropy efforts. And whereas Roz's other passion was to mentor and provide opportunities for young Chinese women to be successful. As a trailblazer, she wanted to give others the opportunity to excel. And whereas Roz Ching Ming Koo will be remembered for her dedicated service, philanthropy, and volunteer. philanthropy, and volunteerism. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby celebrate the memory of Rosalyn Ching Ming Koo for her leadership and contribution to the community. And our condolences on your loss to the family members. Counsel comments, and I do see a former Mayor Lee. Councilman Elaine, can we unmute Councilman, or former Mayor Lee?
That's okay, let the council.
Oh, okay, now we've got, oh, okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Pappen.
Roz was a dear friend and just an amazing woman, and you did not mess with Roz. The work she did was spectacular and she, I miss her dearly. Blessings to her family, thank you for sharing her with us and for her keeping us all in line. She was the best, really, really, just loved her dearly. So thank you, everyone. She will be remembered fondly by many, many of us and for all the great work she's done. It will continue on, thank you.
Okay, and Councilwoman Fung?
Yes, Roz, she is just like what Gina had said last time, she's a force of nature. A true volunteer, someone who dedicated her life serving others. You know, a life well-lived. Really set an example for a lot of us. Her volunteer and philanthropy work for the Asian Americans advancing, you know, her help to the Asian Americans as well as women. It's exceptional. So she will truly be missed. And like I said, she was larger than life and, you know, we're going to miss her dearly. But she lived a perfectly fruitful life, something that we can all aspire. So hats off to Roz and rest in peace, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Maggie Muay, I'm sorry if I mispronounced, one of our board members, and I see Vicky Wong, please, ladies. We thank you for joining us tonight and sharing her with us.
Hi, I'm Maggie and together with me I have Donna and Vicky. We've all served in the Advisory Board in Self Help for the Elderly in San Mateo. We are very honored to represent the family to come and receive this commendation. Unfortunately, they cannot make it tonight, but they want me to share some of their thoughts with you. Mayors, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. Debbie, Roz have two daughters, one is called Debbie and one is called Big Jackie. And both of them are very honored and moved that the city of Millbrae is bestowing this commendation to their mother's memory. And they know how happy and they know how proud her mom was about the successful effort to support the senior in Millbrae. But unfortunately, they cannot be here tonight, but we are honored to represent them. And they are so happy their mom's legacy will continue through Millbrae, this nutrition program and activity programs in Millbrae. And hopefully, I think Roz will be so, so happy that you recognize her. And then I think that she doesn't, she is a very humble lady, even though she is a force, but she doesn't want any recognition. But then I'm sure she love to have the opportunity for us to work together even more to serve the senior in Millbrae. And then Donna and Vicky, you have something to share with them?
Well said, you know, I think Roz would be, would be, you know, seeing us from heaven at this moment. And then she would say, go back to work.
Yes.
Thank you so much for this recognition to Roz, you know, on behalf of San Mateo Self Help for the Elderly. We appreciate that. And then we will follow the example of Roz and continue to serve the seniors and community.
Thank you, thank you for joining us. Did Donna want to say anything? I don't see her on my screen.
Donna, unmute. Donna?
There you are.
All right. Okay. I follow the same message. We are going to miss Roz very deeply. And as member of the Advisory Boards for Millbrae and San Mateo, speaking in for the members tonight. And we wanted to express our deep condolences to her family and friends. We all miss Roz deeply and we know what she wants us to do. Be assured, we are committed to carrying on Roz's outstanding senior service legacy. So we will be back and we'll get what was going, going even better and Roz will guide us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And former Mayor Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, when I first met Roz, I just wondered, who is this, this woman? And I told Gina, Gina's like, never say no to Roz. And I understand why, because she really garners respect from everybody around her. I've never seen anybody who can marshal the whole city, San Mateo City Council and have them all serving the seniors and, and, you know, doing it happily. So I can't say how, what an honor it was to know Roz. And I'm so grateful for her love for her seniors in San Mateo County. She was trying to expand self-help to different cities, started with San Mateo 20 years ago. And then tried to expand it to expand it to Millbrae. And I always told San Mateo, they didn't want self-help and Roz, we'll take her. Because she is just fantastic and she would have taken care of our seniors very well. They have a social hour, they get exercise, they learn crafts. And it's just, she's this amazing woman. And I'm wearing this T-shirt in her honor. And even though they didn't have a walkathon because of COVID, they still managed to raise money a lot just for all the seniors. And I can remember the last time I saw her, she had a walker, but the walker had flames. And I said, that is just so Roz. So thank you for this acknowledgement of Roz. And I'm pretty sure that, and I think Vicky just hit it on the nail, that she just wants us to work and she doesn't want the recognition, but she wants us to remember the work and dedication we need to do for our seniors, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, real quick opportunity. When I first met Roz, after about 30 seconds of conversation, I fell in love with her. Anybody that knows Roz and that's had to, had to work with her absolutely just falls in love with the lady. And she has left a legacy in this county that's going to be unmatched. I had to negotiate with her as a city manager. You know, enough said, she will be missed, she was an incredible woman, a legacy in this county. I, when I got to know her over the last couple of years, I, you know, really, you know, just fell in love with Roz. She is everything that you said, an incredible woman. So she will be missed and in her memory, we honor her, so thank you.
I think before we started the Millbrae Program, me and Roz, actually she already over 90 years old. And then she said that, Maggie, let's go and visit all the senior center in Peninsula. So we went to 17 of different senior center. And her goal is to learn, to see what we can learn and make the Millbrae Center better. So she is in her 90s and she is like a force, I'm telling you.
Well, lovely stories. And again, thank you for joining us tonight and give our best to her daughters and her family and friends. And she will be missed, but again, her legacy lives on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I hate to rush us along, we have one, one last presentation tonight. It has been, and this one is very sad and yet has to be said. And also where I am proud that the city of Millbrae looks at this. So tonight, this proclamation is in reference to the recent attack on elderly Asian people and how absolutely wrong that is. So to the proclamation, whereas as the world continues to battle the coronavirus pandemic, there is another crisis remains prevalent, the increase in assaults on the Asian community and continued anti-Asian racism and xenophobia. And whereas the Asian community, especially the elderly, have been targeted in waves of robberies, burglaries, and assaults throughout the Bay Area and across the country. And whereas the Stop AAPI Hate, Asian American Pacific Islander Initiative established by the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council has collected over 28,000, 2,800 incidents since the start of the pandemic. And whereas despite the increase in the acts of intolerance, there is an estimated 2 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that have served on the front lines of this crisis as healthcare providers, first responders, and in other essential roles. And whereas racism, hateful speech, and prejudice related to the pandemic not only hurts our efforts to overcome the crisis, it compromises the safety and health of our communities. It weakens our collective ability to protect one another and work towards a healthier future. And whereas our cultural diversity is what makes us strong, resilient, and capable of overcoming challenges, it requires everyone to rise to the occasion by showing solidarity and support for one another. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby condemn racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asians and Pacific Islanders and the recent assaults on members of the Asian community throughout the Bay Area and across the country. The city of Millbrae united against racism and xenophobia during the COVID-19 pandemic and always, and encourages the Millbrae community to unite during this unprecedented time. And with that, we have Rose Rose, I'm sorry, Rose, Joy Pasamonte Henry. Henry, a member of our Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition. Rose, please say a few words. Did I say Rose, Joy? Joy, my apologies.
That's okay, no worries. On behalf of Asians, Asian Americans in Millbrae and the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition, thank you to Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Oliva, Councilmembers, City Manager Tom Williams, and the city of Millbrae for this proclamation against anti-Asian racism and xenophobia. I know that this is a step in the right direction. Although our community is made of many religions, cultures, dialects, and even colors, most Asian immigrants, myself included, have been taught to keep feelings to yourself. Don't show pain and don't call unnecessary attention to yourself. It is one reason why anti-Asian racism is downplayed and does not get the notice it deserves. In addition to this proclamation, I ask Mayor Schneider and the council to continue the difficult work of truly addressing this issue head-on. Understand what can be done to stop hate crimes in any form against any race. Determine the best ways to help our Asian small businesses survive and thrive. And most importantly, continue to drive home that there is work to be done by every Millbrae citizen. Hate does not stop hate. That is, we must understand the institutional constructs in place that pit races against one another. As an Asian mother of multiracial children who have been subjected to racism at such young ages, I implore everyone to remember that words matter. Small, positive actions make a difference and hate for any reason has no place in a world or what our children will inherit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Councilman Andrew Spung?
Yes, hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that proclamation as well. On the heel of this proclamation, based on that backdrop, I wanted to let everyone know that, you know, I'm sure a lot of us have seen some of the, you know, recent rise in attacks against the Asian American populations, especially to our seniors. We've seen them in East Bay, we've seen them in San Francisco, throughout the Bay Area as a whole. I wanted to say that, you know, anything that is racially motivated attack on anybody is unacceptable. Any racially motivated attack on one is an attack on the entire community. And hateful crimes such as this, you know, we have zero tolerance here in Millbrae and it should be everywhere. So therefore, you know, earlier today, I have crafted a letter and has been sent to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors and the DA's office, asking for an ordinance to be passed so that we can treat any crime, you know, committed that is racially motivated, especially to our seniors, to be treated as a hate crime and with enhanced penalty. We have to take tough stands on senseless violence such as this. There should be zero tolerance to crime committed against, you know, seniors and anything that is racially motivated such as this. And therefore, you know, I'm also asking the entire council to support that as well. And I would also be making that request to some of the other organizations and try to get as many support as we can because this has to stop. And, you know, we living in a county where nearly a third of our population identify as Asian Americans. So this has to start here and we have to take a tough stand against crime committed such as this.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Councilwoman Pappen?
Reiterating what Councilmember Fung said, and we need to change the law. I do believe the Sheriff's Department is now recording these crimes. The FBI was not, and we need to change the law to make this a hate crime. So that happens at the state level and the federal level. And with the help of our local law enforcement, our local residents, the media, we need to put this in the forefront and really elevate the seriousness of this crime by labeling it as it is, a hate crime, and taking it from there. So I believe that this council would be united in that purpose, but it happens at the state and the federal level. We just need to really stay strong and support our state legislature, encourage them, and our federal representatives. So I don't think we're, I think we all are on the same page with that and we need to make that happen sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Helen Fu? Opening up for public comments, Ms. Helen Fu?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So hi, everyone, my name is Helen and I'm a Millbrae resident since 2016. So I joined the field council meetings, but like this is my first time speaking at our city council meeting. The reason why I feel strongly about speaking up today is because of the uprising anti-Asian attacks on our community. So I was so glad to hear the proclamation read earlier and it's great to know the city takes it very seriously. And additionally, I also wanted to share some of my thoughts on this topic and also as well as my personal experience. So I learned the other day, my coworker's uncle got beat up by three men in front of his house in the mission in SF. And this accident greatly affected all of us on the team. I never felt such attacks so much closer to us than ever before. And 48.6% of the Millbrae residents are identified as Asian. And I believe the reported incidents were way underreported. So to all of my fellow Millbrae residents, I strongly encourage you to speak up if you experience any such attacks and come forward, tell your story and make your voice heard. And to all the council members, I strongly urge you to take decisive and bold actions immediately to better protect our community and the residents of the city of Millbrae. And we can't sit around and do nothing, we must be proactive about taking action. And criminalizing racial attacks is the first step in the right direction. I also have like 14 months old at home and I feel compelled to teach my daughter that we Asian Americans refuse to be silent victims in this country. And we will make our voice heard aloud and clear. And we demand immediate actions now to protect our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Fu? I, we have Alice Quang, City Clerk, she's on the phone. I don't know if we have to do anything special.
Hi, good evening.
Oh, you're perfect.
Yeah, good evening, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilperson, thank you, everyone. And I am the same, I want to speak up, I can cry. Because I've been in the United States for a long, long time, I never have those tiredness time, I feel so sad, so done, feels unsafe. And I, I'd never And I, I'd never seen I, our seniors had been their best dream trying to stay in America. And now they're alive at any time. They don't have any signal. They can tell under unsafe. And you don't know when and where people can just suddenly come and put in the life risk. It's awful. It's painful. It, it is not just like something I heard, it's not, it's become riskable. And every day, and too much, even I cannot emotionally tolerate all of those bad news. It's impossible. And we are such a good citizen. We, we have a lot right to live safe and community. And I really thank you all to pay attention and voice out to protect our community, our seniors. And we, because United States is an international, united. And like me, I've been coming a lot of time and trying to do volunteer and support the community. Why, few years ago, we set up for the nonprofit organizations to call cultural, um, Millbrae Culture Committee. Because we really want to share culture, supporting, and based on my minimum knowledge, more interaction with different culture, the community will more smart and grows faster because we can use all the talents and support each others. We can get all the best culture from each, you know, risk and grow the community. But now, seems, I, I, I just lost my confidence of safety. I feel so bad. I really hurt. And emotionally, I say again, I cannot tolerate it. That's happening. And peace. And I'm urging everyone have, have voice out and try to, as what Tina and Anders and all other council persons say, please, say as soon as possible and the law to enforce to protect our group of those witness people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quang. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I'll, I'll let Amy and Michael go first, then I'll, I'll, I'll do cleanup.
Okay. Thank, uh, thank you. Thanks, Wayne. Amy and Michael?
Uh, thank you, everyone. I'd like to join in as well and add on to some of the comments that have have been in response to the proclamation. We've, we're all aware of the rise in anti-Asian and Pacific Islander violence, and it's, it's true. It's very painful to think of anyone doing anything to someone who's elderly. They're so vulnerable to begin with. And just to add on to what Joy said, because she and I have gotten to know each other working on the Anti-Racist, Anti-Racist Coalition, is that we need to raise awareness and help people in our community, starting with youth, what our country's history is, and raise awareness about that there is racism everywhere, including in our country against, and in our community of Millbrae against people of all ages and all walks of life. So this is something that, it's not a matter, the public safety is a real issue, but to, to prevent things from happening, as opposed to catching people doing bad things, you want to teach them why they should not do bad things. And where, where that teaching starts, I believe, is in our schools. It's with our textbooks. It's with our children of all ages, and it's in our homes, is having conversations so our children in the right language, not with a fourteen-month-old, but with a fourteen-year-old, that we find the right words to talk to our children about these things. And I'd like to turn it over to my husband, Michael.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, everybody. Just wanted to call out Joy's comments. I know everyone kind of acknowledged the council and Mayor Ann. That's great. But Joy, what you said was so true and very eloquent. All the community and group input here resonates. It's very meaningful. What I'd like to share is that to do something about this, yes, education, getting the youth kind of understanding it. But this weekend, on Saturday, there will be a march in San Mateo. A middle school girl, I believe her name is Ashlyn So. She and her mother Angela are organizing a protest march on that specific topic about xenophobia and crimes against the Asian community. In particular, it's one o'clock this Saturday at Central Park. Millbrae Art will be there. We're bringing our PA and our sound system. You'll see our banners. We hope you join us. One o'clock, Central Park in San Mateo. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. And, and Councilman Lee? Uh, former Mayor Lee?
Madam Mayor, I just, I feel like I already exhausted a lot of my minutes, but I, I just want to thank Helen and Alice and Joy, Michael, Amy. Thank you for taking the time to make comments about this really important topic. Of course, it'd be nice if people would treat people kindly. And it would be, that's really what's important here, is that I think that the council and many cities in this county, thank, thank you all. In April, we, the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, the San Mateo Asian Pacific Island Caucus, sent out a letter, and all the mayors, in that time, Mayor Holliver, and all the councils signed on to this letter denouncing xenophobia. And the point was, is that even though BLM was occurring, it was, it was the point that we, it was the Asians were being attacked at that time. And at that time, I can tell you, I was a victim in front of Trader Joe's. Somebody came up and started coughing in my face, just got out of line, started coughing in my face. I didn't report it, but you know, it's just, it was one of those terrible ignorant acts. And it's, and those acts don't usually get recorded. And, and I speak English. So in, in my, in my, in my role as a council member at that time, it didn't, it just, you know, you have to let those things go a lot of times. So, but the point is, is that the Asian Pacific Island Caucus, uh, thank you for your support and, and pointing this out. And we, as a caucus, are working on diversity and equality and trying to help people understand that people are people and that they shouldn't be demeaned, they shouldn't be subhuman, they shouldn't be treated as subhuman. They should be treated as people. And we are not, uh, we're focused on, yes, we are Asian caucus, but we also focus on, on supporting our, our other, our other ethnicities, religions, and sexual orientations. So I hope you make it to this weekend's rally, and I'm really encouraged by this young lady courage. And I also have to say, at the BLM movement, most of the speakers were actually Asian, if you think, if you think about it. So it's, it's, so this is people for people. And Councilman Fung, I just thank you for that letter. I just also want to thank you for joining the caucus. And those of you people who want to still join the caucus visit our website and, you know, applications. And so the, your letter, we will, we, as a caucus, will be going to the other cities and encouraging other cities to support your, your suggestion, your ordinance, and ask for more accountability and transparency. And I spoke to Sheriff Carlos Bolanos, and he said, he, he very emphatically says he has no tolerance for hate crime. They're tracking it, and he will, you know, persecute you to the, to the limit of the law. So he is not, he's not fooling around. And I really believe that he's sincere, and he's been doing a good job. So I ran out of time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor, I believe you muted.
You know, within the next six months, maybe we will all get to meet in person. That is my hope. Thank you for everyone who spoke tonight. I think all of us, if we were watching the news, saw the, the video of the gentleman in Oakland being pushed down. And that could be any of our parents on that, and it's, it's wrong, and it's scary when you're elderly. So I, I'm worried that all of our older people, and we have a large elderly population in Millbrae of many races, that, that fear can become overwhelming. But I am happy to, we have a tremendous police chief. I know that they are out there, and I, Chief, if you are here, I would just like to close, well, first, I'd like to say, I ran this past our city clerk last Friday when we were getting really close to the deadline of what we could do. And one thing that these council meetings do, even though this is a very long night for just the public presentations, is to bring attention to the problem and hope that everyone here in Millbrae, we treat each other as we would like to be trish, treated. It's the golden rule on that. And in fact, maybe we go beyond. Maybe we treat someone really well, even if we haven't been treated well that day, and hope that all of that paying forward goes on. Chief, if you are still with us, um, I just, and maybe city manager, if you, if we don't have the chief, if we see something, how do we report it? There you are, chief. How do we report it? I get that question all the time. Do I call the business line? Do I call 911? How do we take part? Please help us.
Absolutely. Call 911. If you need to talk to us, I don't want you thinking about what number to call. The number to call is 911. I will tell you, we are not going to tolerate this in my city, period. I also met with Sheriff Bolanos this morning. We are absolutely united and being completely intolerant in this regard. We have a strong record of investigating and solving hate crimes. We have probably the most diverse police bureau in the state, and I'm telling you, we are not going to tolerate this. I don't like violent crime. I don't like violent crime against the elder, against the elderly, and I really dislike it when it's racially motivated. I'm a mixed-race guy myself. So if you see something, please say something. Call 911. Don't call your brother, your sister. Don't talk about it. Don't think about it. The quicker you call us, the quicker we get out there. And then we can render aid, and we can actually get these people and hold them accountable for their terrible actions. I agree. There's other measures, and there's a lot of other things we could do on the front end, like education and teaching people to act properly. But sometimes when the rubber's hitting the road and things are happening quickly, guys like me will be great to step in, and we'd be happy to teach you the lesson the hard way through the judicial system. Our state has very robust hate crime enhancements for crimes. And I'll be working with the city manager. I reached out to Councilmember Fung and to former Mayor Lee as well, and I intend to work with whoever wants to work with us to make this happen and to let people know, hey, we're going to keep, we're not tolerating this in Millbrae. And for context, none of this has happened in Millbrae. As far as I can see, we haven't had any in our county yet. I know San Francisco has some issues with it. I know the East Bay had issues with it. And we're all kind of one large community, but because we have a strong DA and our enforcement stance, especially towards violent crime, is very solid in our county. Hopefully, that's going to stay away, but we're going to be, continue to be diligent. We want to work with the community, and if you think you need us, 911, please.
Thank you, Chief. And going back to what Joy Pasamonte Henry said, many cultures are not overly confident in calling 911. We want you to call 911. You see something, you say something by calling 911. It, with data, if not happening, but if it is happening, data helps us better prepare and put into, uh, put into action programs that we might have. So with that, I thank you all, and I look forward to the march this Saturday at Central Park. It was at one o'clock. At one o'clock, social distancing, double masks, six feet apart. Thank you all. And thank you, Chief. Okay. I'm sorry. This was a really long night tonight. We knew it when we saw this agenda. I thank you for your patience and for all of the visitors tonight. For first timers coming to council, it is lovely to have you here. I hope this is not the last time that you come and speak at a council meeting. Democracy works when people speak forward. With that, council, I am sorry, we're an hour and a half in after a special council meeting. Tom Williams, take it away, and let's see how we can boom through the rest. Everyone else, be out there, be safe.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. Just a couple of, of brief updates. As, as has been discussed, the county of San Mateo has announced with the state of California that, that San Mateo County has moved into the less restrictive red tier. There is still substantial risks, so please remember the three W's: wear a mask, wash your hands, watch your distance. But this is good news as the rate of infection has gone down and the rate of death and emergency room beds also has decreased. So quickly, what is effective today, restaurants are allowed indoor dining to a maximum of twenty-five percent of capacity or a hundred people, whichever is less. Retail is open now to fifty percent of capacity. Shopping centers, swap meets, and indoor, uh, again, retail, fifty percent of capacity. All the common areas are closed, however. Personal care services, hair and nail salons, barber shops, they are open with modifications. Museums used and aquariums are open to maximum twenty-five percent of capacity. Places of worship, again, open to twenty-five percent capacity. This is indoors or one hundred people. Movie theaters are open, twenty-five percent capacity or one hundred people. And gyms and fitness centers are open indoors to ten percent of capacity. So this is good news. We're headed in the right direction, moving from the purple tier to the red tier. Also, as has been said, Outdoor Supply Hardware, their grand opening ribbon cutting was today, although they had a soft opening last weekend. Truly going full speed today. So this is at the same location as Orchard Supply Hardware, and I wanted to make note of this because they are continuing to hire at this Millbrae location. So anyone that's interested in applying for a position at the new Outdoor Supply Hardware can log on to their website, which is www dot OutdoorSupplyHardware dot com. And so anybody looking for employment here locally, please log on to that website for opportunities. And then I would just, we, we get from time to time compliments from the community and members of the community, but one I wanted to acknowledge this evening, and that is, that is from Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy. And just real quick, it says, "My husband and I wanted to commend all the workers who had to work on the project that started August 20th on the water pipe in front of our house on Madera Way. This long and difficult project has just been completed on February 10th, 2021. A new pipe had to be replaced, a new grade on the sidewalk to cover the pipe, which is now hinged. New concrete sidewalk and gutter needed to be done as well, asphalt on the road. Part of the project came onto our property, and your workers, Trevor and Mario, replaced a decorative rock as, as it was originally there before the work started." Because Jack, meaning Jack Diaz, one of our supervisors, had taken pictures before the project. And I just wanted to note this because I wanted to recognize our public work staff that are out there keeping things moving and the great teamwork that this letter represents. So just like to acknowledge our, our public works department and our workers that are out in the field every day keeping things moving in this nice letter from Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy. And then lastly, the agenda. So real quick, the agenda this evening. We have our usual items, reports of bills and claims, calendar of events, approval of the meeting minutes for October 13th, 2020. There are no oral reports from city committee or commission chairs this evening. Then we move into public communication. That's for any member of the public that would like to address the city council. On any item not on the agenda, comments are limited to three minutes. Then moving on to the consent calendar, we have two items, items five and six. Item five is to receive the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending January 31st, 2021. And then item six is to adopt by resolution the official city flag. Then we move on to public hearings. We have one item, item number seven. This is to consider adoption of a proposed ordinance admitting chapter 10.05 of the Millbrae Municipal Code to adopt a procedure for imposing and administering specific plan reimbursement fees. There are three actions. This ordinance is the second reading, so waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance. That could actually be done in one motion. And then a second separate motion would be approval of the fee resolution, the actual setting of the fee for reimbursement. We did receive a letter from one of the primary property owners, Vince Moosie's attorney. You should all have that, and we will address that letter during the staff presentation. Moving on to existing business, three items, starting with item number eight. Consider adoption of an ordinance repealing chapter 6.40 of the Millbrae Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 6.40 regulating the use of disposable food service ware by restaurants and facilities throughout the city. Again, this is a second reading to adopt the ordinance. Item number nine is to consider a motion to approve the conceptual sketch for the mural on the skate park wall at the skate park here in the city of Millbrae. Item 10 is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bay Area Rapid Transit District, known as BART, for the reconveyance of property in parcels located on this, on the west side of the Millbrae Transit Station for the purpose of finally constructing Railroad Avenue roadway. Item number 11, new business, is an overview of all of our park improvement concepts and pending grants. And then we move into council comments, and that concludes the staff overview and, and city manager report. And that, uh, concludes the staff overview and, and city manager report.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, with that, uh, moving to agenda item number three, approval of minutes. Any comments or a motion to approve the minutes from October 13th, 2020?
Papen move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
I, I think I heard Mr. Hold, uh, Councilman Holliver, second.
Yes.
That was, okay, thank you. Any comments? Okay, Ms., uh, Ms. Tran, could you, uh, do roll call, please?
Councilmember Holliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The regular meeting minutes of October 13th is approved by the vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you, uh, city clerk. Uh, there are no oral reports, as the city manager stated. Next up is public communication. So we have lots of, of people here. This is for an item not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I see Ms. Fogarty. Please go ahead, Mrs. Fogarty.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just to comment on the proclamation, uh, for Josephine Wa. I just wanted to, uh, suggest that you might want to amend that proclamation to include that she was the first woman mayor for the city of Millbrae.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, thank you. Okay, any other comments for items not on the agenda? Okay, with that closing, public communication, moving to consent calendar. Uh, may I have a motion to approve consent calendar items?
Move approval.
Okay, Mr. Holliver.
In second.
And Ms. Papen. Any, any comments? Uh, with that, um, city clerk, city clerk, could you call the, call the vote, please?
Councilmember Holliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, uh, Leva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent items five and six is approved unanimously.
Thank you. And I would probably say I've received several emails over the last couple of months from people who collect city flags. So hopefully we'll, within our budget, uh, now that we have a flag, let's, um, make a few little flags for that. And for the sister cities, check in with sister cities. Because typically when you do that, there's an exchange of flags and we weren't able to do that to Malta or to Hanyu. So, uh, yay, one accomplishment done. Thank you. All right, with that, I'd like, moving on to agenda item number seven, opening public hearing for adoption of a proposed ordinance amending chapter 10.05 of the Millbrae Municipal Code to adopt a procedure for imposing and administering the specific reimbursement fees and a resolution to establish reimbursement fee program for the Millbrae Station area. And with that, staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our planning manager, Mr. Roscoe Mata, for a staff presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Mata.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Roams. And just one moment while I share presentation. Is that coming through okay? Great.
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Roscoe Mata and I'll be making the presentation on the Millbrae Station area specific plan, reimbursement fee ordinance and resolution. I'm joined here tonight by the city attorney's office, who assisted with the preparation of the ordinance and resolution. Before I begin, uh, just a few housekeeping items. Uh, I just wanted to bring attention to attachments, number one and two of the, uh, staff report. These two attachments were revised and up till, up, and the revised attachments were uploaded to the website and distributed to each council prior to the meeting. Uh, additionally, I do want to point out one typo on page three, under fiscal impact, a second paragraph. And, um, that, the, the, the number, which is the total cost of the Millbrae Station area specific plan cost is, um, uh, should read 1.9, 1,940, uh, 34,000. 1.9 million, three, um, sorry, just one more here. 1.9 million, uh, 34,858 and 70 cents. Um, so that number is consistent with the resolution. Um, it's just misstated in this one section here. Uh, and one other item, as Mr. Williams mentioned, uh, staff received public correspondence from Ms. Fogarty, attorney for Vincent Moosey, uh, the owner of, um, Millbrae Station, uh, Millbrae Sarah Station. And staff is available to answer any questions, uh, should the, uh, council have any. Uh, with that, um, I'll continue with my presentation. The objective tonight is to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 10.05 of the Millbrae Municipal Code to adopt a procedure for imposing and administering specific plan reimbursement fees and a resolution to establish, uh, reimbursement fee program for the preparation costs of the Millbrae Station area specific plan. Uh, just by, uh, brief background, the Millbrae Station area specific plan was originally adopted in 1998. And at the request of Republic Urban and developer of Millbrae Sarah Station, the MSASP was updated in 2016. The Millbrae Sarah Station and Gateway developers, uh, will be getting reimbursed for a fair share portion amount as future development occurs in the planned area. The update resulted in increased heights and densities in the specific planned area. And the environmental impact report that was prepared as part of the plan allows future projects to tear off EIR for streamlined secret review. The slide here shows the Millbrae Station area specific plan boundary. It's indicated in the red dashed line. And the, um, the property owners, uh, for select properties within a specific planned area will be, um, subject to this fee, as I'll describe a little bit later on the presentation. The proposed ordinance tonight, uh, the second reading, um, authorizes, uh, government code section 654, 656, authorize the cities to impose fees, reimbursement fees on new development to compensate the city for reasonable costs of developing, preparing, adopting, administering specific plans. The adoption of this ordinance is the first step to allow the city to recruit costs to reimburse the, uh, Millbrae Sarah Station and Gateway developers. And on February 9th, 2021, the city council introduced the ordinance and with the first reading. The proposed resolution before you tonight establishes the parcels that are subject to the fee and the methodology that is used to determine the amount per parcel. This slide here shows the Millbrae Station area specific plan and the parcels in green are the parcels that are, uh, or areas that are subject to the reimbursement fee. Uh, the, these areas were identified as these areas were zoned, rezoned for, um, that increased the maximum height from the 1998, 1998 specific plan. Uh, the max, the height increase of 15 feet or more was identified as, um, the benefit, uh, those properties that received the greatest benefit from this planned area, uh, this planned, specific plan update. And, um, comparing the 1998 specific plan to the 2016 specific plan update, these two height differences greater than 15 feet were identified and those are the areas in green. And also, uh, the numbers that you see on the screen, um, also correspond to the areas in the chart in the, um, in attachment two, exhibit, uh, exhibit B. So these are the areas and specific, um, calculations for these areas. So just a brief, uh, rundown of how the fee was determined. Yeah. The, first we have to determine what the amount of, um, density increase compared to the 1998 specific plan. So the height increase greater than 15 feet, what is the total, um, cubic feet, um, of, um, height increase for all those properties that qualify? And, uh, according to the chart in attachment two, as you can see, there's a total of 54,801,609 total cubic feet. The total specific plan cost was 1.9 million, 34,858,070 cents. So dividing the total specific plan cost by the amount of cubic feet yields 0.0353, uh, per cubic foot. And the way that you would calculate the fee is you would take the lot area. And, um, I have an example here. One particular area, uh, received a 35 feet allowable height increase compared to the 1998 specific plan. The lot area is 32,659 square feet. Multiply that by 35 and, yeah, multiply that by the rate, uh, per cubic foot. And that is, um, for this particular parcel would be $40,357.74. The fiscal impact of this, uh, ordinance, uh, action one, um, would be, no, there wouldn't be any impacts with the approval of the ordinance. The ordinance allows fees to be collected on certain properties within the, uh, within the MSASP to recover costs associated with the MSASP update. Action two, there also would not be any fiscal impact to the city in adopting the resolution, establishing the MSASP reimbursement fee as the total cost of the MSASP update, including supporting environmentally, environmental review documents. Um, for reimbursement is estimated to be one, low, over 1.9 million. The developers for TOD one and TOD two have already paid this amount. So the revenues that we collect from the proposed fee would go to reimburse those developers, uh, for the amounts previously paid to the city. So tonight's action, staff, uh, recommends that the council waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance adding section 10.5, point 3170 to title 10 of the Millbrae Municipal Code. Uh, it's attachment number one, allowing the city to establish a specific plan reimbursement fee program. And second action to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution. Attachment number two, implementing a specific plan reimbursement fee program for the Millbrae Station area specific plan. Um, staff is available to answer any questions. And I would also like to, um, to commend, uh, finance department for, uh, great work on, um, going through a lot of the costs and invoices to establish the MSASB costs as we required a lot of work, um, and burdened on staff. So with that, um, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mata. Okay, council, we have ways of going. We can take any council comments. I know there was a letter from, um, uh, Ms. Fogarty. Did we, did you want to address that letter before or, or open it for? I don't know if council, I saw, I had enough time to review the letter this evening and the changes to the staff report. I don't know if the other council members had that time. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody raising.
First.
Um, public comment first? Was that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, uh, Councilman Holliver. With that, I'd like to open public comment. And I do see Ms. Fogarty.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. These comments are on behalf of Millbrae Sarah Station LLC, whom I represent. Uh, first, we want to thank the staff and the city attorney for working with us with some of our concerns about, uh, the way these, uh, documents are drafted. With regard to the resolution at section five, uh, we ask that the language, uh, track the, uh, ordinance rather than, uh, the language in the resolution, and that is as to when the fee is paid. Uh, so in the ordinance, it says the fee is due at the time of application for first government approvals. And in the resolution, it says the fee is payable at the time of the first qualifying approval, which is defined as first design review or building permit, which is a long ways down the road from the first application for government approval. Uh, we think that this, um, is an important issue for several reasons. One is that the, uh, subsequent developers are benefiting greatly from walking into a project where they don't have to do all the background work. This has added immensely to the market value of their property. Uh, and so they should be paying back what has been advanced on their behalf uh, at the time they first applied for, uh, a project. It's also better for the city because, uh, the benefit has accrued, uh, at the time they apply. And then, uh, they can't then hold up payment to the city, uh, somewhere down the road when they don't get the answer that they want. Uh, and their, and their project, they have to tweak their project or their project isn't approved. The reimbursement fee also, uh, you'll have a greater likelihood of actually collecting the reimbursement fees if they're due upfront instead of down the line sometime, uh, when the, um, the project that they're advancing, uh, may be abandoned because they can't be done the way they want it done. Uh, secondly, uh, we want to, uh, on behalf of Millbrae Station, uh, reserve the right to object to the total cost estimate that the fee rate is based on. Uh, because we're in the midst right now of doing an audit of those costs pursuant to the 2014 agreement between the city and Millbrae Sarah Station. And there are some issues there that still aren't ironed out. Uh, we understand that the council can, uh, amend that fee down the road. Uh, but we just want to reserve the rights of Millbrae Sarah Station as to those issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fogarty. Uh, staff, do you want to, to comment or help council who may not have had a chance to read the letter?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I guess, are there any specific?
Yeah. But I, I would suggest first, we're holding a public hearing. Madam, um, Mayor, why don't we get all the comments and then the staff can respond?
Okay.
If there are any others who want to?
I don't, I, um, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Give it a couple of minutes. There hadn't been any.
Well, then.
In that case, um, do I need a motion to close public hearing? No, I'm seeing, I'm seeing former Mayor Holliver saying no. I actually.
Why don't we, why don't we leave the public? Let's hear the pub, let's leave the public hearing open.
Open, okay.
Responses to the.
Okay. All right. In that case, are there questions from council? How's that? Did I do that, Ms. Ms.?
You did that beautifully.
And it's not even the longest night yet. Um, any comments for, or questions from council?
Uh, I'm not quite sure if I understand, uh, Janet's comments. Um, do you think, could staff, could somebody, uh, kind of explain that to me a little bit?
Well.
I don't know if I mean specifically, but.
City attorney, and as long as a public hearing is still open, uh, perhaps ask, uh, ask.
You know, I think, um, if I may, um, I think Ms. Fogarty, uh, basically has, has a primary issue and that is to the timing of the payment.
Right.
She, um, uh, you know, they, her client, um, fronted, uh, with the Gateway Millbrae Project, her client, that other project fronted, uh, the significant costs of our specific plan, uh, development and approval, which included an environmental review process. Those are always expensive processes. And I think the idea, the concern is to get her client and, and of course, then, of course, the other project developer reimbursed sooner than later. And I think Janet had proposed some good reasons why it could be beneficial for the city to require the, uh, why it could be beneficial for the city to require the, the payment of this reimbursement fee earlier than later. And that is really what her letter is about, you know, suggesting that the fee be paid when a project applicant within the specific plan area submits an application.
Thank you. I, I think I understand that part. What about the part about she said for future developers? Or some, something to the effect that if somebody else comes in after? Did I, did I misunderstand something there?
Are you talking about the audit part?
No.
And the fee, the, the .053 or .035?
I thought, I thought something to the effect that if somebody came in after they had, they had been granted the approval that those people, if they, if somebody else came in, they would benefit.
Well, yes, yeah, sure, Janet, why don't you take it? Yeah. So Vice Mayor Leva, what I, what we're concerned about is that in the, in the ordinance, it says that when the applicant comes in for the first government approval application, they're supposed to pay the fee. But in the resolution, it says they don't have to pay that fee until they are either applying for a building permit or applying for design review. So that's a lot further down the road than when they first come in with an application. So, so there are two points here. One is that the ordinance and the, and the resolution are not consistent with one another. The other is that we feel that it's, as, as Joan said, the, the, the companies that have advanced these fees and have paved the way for all of the future applicants for projects in this station area. And they're entitled to reimbursement. They've effectively loaned close to $2 million between the two of them to the city in advance for anybody else who wants to come in with a project in this area. They won't have to do all of that station area plan update. They won't have to do all of the SEQA work. And that significantly benefits that property, as you know, being a Realtor. When, when someone knows that they can meet all of the requirements, there's much less risk and then their property is more valuable because they're, they, they know what they can do. They don't have to wait for a bunch of studies for a couple of years to get done. They can come in with a project that will match the requirements. The, the other issue is that, and, and by the way, that they benefit from that immediately. Like they've already benefited by that. Their property is already worth more because the companies have fronted all of the hard costs for, for doing all that prep work. And, and that's why it's fair to charge them upfront because they've already benefited by that. The, the second issue is just the practical issue of if they, if they pay that as one more fee that they're supposed to pay, the city is more likely to collect it upfront than if they get partway through the project and they decide they don't want to do it. They can't get the financing for it. The city says, no, we don't want an upside down triangle on that property or something else. You're more likely to get the fee upfront when they first have the bright idea and come in with it than down the road somewhere where they don't like the conditions that are imposed on them. So that's, that's the practical reason that we're asking for this modification. And it's, you know, it's a small modification in our opinion, but it's important, I think, as a policy measure of, of when when you're going to charge that subsequent developer to make sure that, first of all, that the city gets paid and so they can reimburse the two entities they're supposed to reimburse. But secondly, so that the, the one who comes in later doesn't try to twist the city's arm after the city's already gotten into the process. Down the road, you're already finally at design review or finally at a building permit. And then they say, well, city, we're not going to pay this fee unless you give us what we want for design review. And, and so that's a policy issue for the city as well, that, that I think the, the council ought to consider. Your, your, if you do it upfront, you're not going to be backed into a corner when you get to design review.
Thank you.
You're, you're muted, Anne.
Oh, I said, thank you.
Mayor, we can't.
Okay, third time. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did you have a question on the second part of Ms. Fogarty's request or Millbury Sarah Station's request? Which had to do with the audit and the setting of the fees, which would be the second motion, correct, Joan?
Well, so here, as I understand it, they, they are not satisfied yet that the calculations of the city are correct. And they are reserving their rights to undertake their own calculations, which I understand they're doing, right, Janet? And, and if, if they find that they feel the fee should be other than, than what is being proposed tonight. Let's assume the council went forward to get something on the books. That they would like to come forward and sit with the city, provide the evidence. This council can always, with a resolution, doesn't require two readings. It would require a notice and a public hearing because it's a fee schedule or it's a fee. But we, we could easily, if the evidence was persuasive, change the fee, propose a change in the fee down the road.
So if that were the case, would we have to modify the motion to make sure that it recognizes that Millbury Sarah Station can return?
No, and I would tell you no for this reason. I mean, the fee is supposed to be accurate. The city finance department, according to, you know, the city finance department has worked long and hard to, to make it as accurate. They believe it's accurate. But it's supposed to be accurate. And if, if Mr. Muzi and Jan and Ms. Fogarty come forward with evidence that persuades us it's not accurate, we, we really have a duty to go forward and make the change.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the reimbursement fee should be a fee that reimburses these developers for the money they are out that's at the stage for future development in a truncated, in a, in a more expedited manner under SEQA. As Janet said, that is, that is a very valuable feature of any applicant that comes down the pike later on in this specific plan area that, that much of the groundwork has already been done such that they don't have to fund the cost of a program EIR. They, they can have a project specific EIR. They can do something on a much more, a quicker basis.
Thank you.
So anyway, we, we really, if, if, if they prove us wrong, we, we, you know, we should move forward and not have a fee in place that does not accurately reflect the cost to reimburse.
Okay, Councilman Holber.
Thank you. Ms. Casman, do you have a response to Ms. Fogarty's first request of the timing of the payment? What your opinion is?
So from a legal standpoint, I think that, that the timing can be whenever the council feels it is most appropriate. I, I think Janet has given you good reasons why her client feels that the fee should be imposed at the earliest possible time in the application in the development process. You know, and, and I, I imagine, I mean, one could argue there could be a chilling effect also on people coming forward if. I mean, I think that there are arguments on both sides. I think she presents very good arguments as to why this, this fee should be paid early. But what one could argue that maybe the payment should come later. From a legal standpoint, the council is fully within your discretion.
What about the comment that the, the MSASP ordinance? Or sorry, maybe that's this ordinance, that it states that the payment is due at the time of application for first government approvals.
So that is certainly one approach. And, you know, her argument that the, the ordinance and the resolution should be consistent is a good one. Certainly, I would agree with that. You know, we, we should have, you know, we should have consistency. You will see that in the revised documents that were sent to you today. Now both the resolution and the ordinance at least reflect the payment of the fee at the same time. And that is prior to the approval of the first governmental approval. Now, it says prior to the approval, it would have, you know, as, as they were approaching the first governmental approval, it would need to be paid. I, you know, Janet was arguing that, well, you know, if they don't get the approval, then, you know, maybe then, then they wouldn't pay it. But perhaps the city would work out a situation in which as the matter was going to be considered for approval, it would need to be paid regardless of the outcome.
Okay, so it's really, in your view, a policy decision?
I think it's fully, the council's policy discretion, it is a matter of timing.
You know, maybe if I may also have Mr. Roscoe Mata, our planning manager, jump in here and further address the timing of the resolution and the timing of the ordinance.
Go ahead, Mr. Roscoe.
I think there may be confusion.
Sure, yes, so it is just a matter of timing. The, the ordinance states that unless otherwise stated in the adopting resolution.
Right.
And if you go to the resolution under section five, there it says that it's the payment reimbursement fees to pay will in full prior to the approval of the first qualifying approval for that parcel. So when an application comes in, there are fees to be paid for processing the application. And then staff would use it as a completeness review, make sure they're consistent with zoning code. Departments reviewed their, make sure that the development is consistent with their codes as well. And then once it's, before it goes to the planning commission, then that is when the fee is due. The Ms. Fogarty contends that the fee should be due at the time the applicant submits their application for review by the planning division.
So, so to be clear and for the record, really, the ordinance and the resolution are not inconsistent in terms of this particular fee.
So you're saying then that payment would be due not at the time of the building permit or design review permit, it would be due before that as currently written?
Correct. Isn't that correct, Roscoe? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that it seems fairly minor to me. I mean, I understand, you know, the, the way that Ms. Fogarty was explaining it earlier in that, you know, the, there's really no guarantee that a design review permit or building permit will be issued, especially, you know, looking at TOD one and TOD two both paid for the MSASP. You know, well before there was ever any guarantee their permit, their projects would be approved. So, but it sounds like the way it's currently written, the fees would be paid fairly early on in, in the process. Unless I hear otherwise, I think I'm comfortable with it the way that it's written. Still a little bit confused, but I'm hearing conflicting information here.
Before I call Ms. Fogarty back, I would say that I actually, having read the letter, I see the, the point of trying to get the money farther upfront than farther down the line because it could literally be years, given how other entities have control over us. So I would, I would be in support of that. Ms. Fogarty and then council members, other comments, where are the, where, where are the rest of the council members sitting right now? Go, Ms. Fogarty.
If I may, Ms. Ms. Mayor?
Yes, please, Mr. Funk.
Yes, so let me just ask a question, Mr. Malta. You had it said on that section five, saying that the fee will be due prior to first governmental approval, which, you know, for all practical purposes, would likely to be in front of the planning commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it seems like, you know, that fee will be due. That there's a certain amount of money that would be, certain amount of fee will be due at the application submittal. Plan check fee, some of the other stuff that will be due. You know, cost of reviewing the plans and the like, developing the plans and the like. And upon the application, as the application moves along, you know, I, I remember the assumption that after the planning department has a chance to review all the plan, plan check comments are issued as it get closer and closer to the point where it is ready for the first governmental hearing. That is when this reimbursable fee is due. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the logic. And the logic of that, why, why did you set up that timing for that fee to be paid at that time? If you can understand that logic from you?
Well, it's simply because there is no, before you go through, you had already gone through the process. And once you, once you're ready to go to the, in forth, by the, in front of the planning commission, there would be some reasonable assurances that you, that the project would be heard. And we originally wanted to have it upfront at this manner. The other option is to have it done at the building permit stage, but that, that, that timeline is a little bit further off. And we didn't think that, that it would be a, a good option. So I think a good compromise is before you get the approvals, just because gives you some sort of good faith effort that you've already, you're, you're, you're complying with the plan and you've already complied with the plan, at least to staff's perspective.
And, and these are, I'm sorry, and these are the fees that is the cost of developing a SEQA document? Right? Environmental review, that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, these are, well, Russ, Russ, why don't you want to answer that?
Sure, yes, it's the preparation of the specific plan and the environmental documents for the plan.
So, these are fees that have already been paid. These are fees that are, in fact, the last, I think, the fees, the cost completed in 2016. I mean, that's.
Understood. What I was trying to get at was, had this not been done by some of the previous applicants, such as Mr. Muzi and TOD two, for example, if another developer were to come in and put in a new application to develop what, you know, site within that same area, when would they begin to incur those costs? Right? So that would be looking at this as such as a benchmark as to what was the fair timing for these expenses to occur for the new applicant.
And isn't the answer well in advance?
Well, so.
Not necessarily.
My question is that an applicant, an applicant submits a planning application. They submit a deposit and we draw off of that deposit. So it's a pay as you go during the processing of their application. And they're still paying that fee. Let's say if, if, if staff recommends denial and their project is denied, they're still paying that processing fee as they go through the process. It's, it's not a fee that's, you know, that we wait till after an action. And, and there is an argument to be made, you know, we don't want this to be a, a, a quid pro quo for an approval, you know, and take that pressure off. So I think that as we have recommended, payment prior to approval is a, is a good recommendation that kind of balances both, both sides.
Ms. Fogarty?
I, I just want to call the council's attention to the resolution at the top of the page before section three. And, and it, it defines when qualifying approval is. Unless this has been changed on another version of this document I haven't seen. But it says qualifying approval is for first design review permit or building. or building permit. That's different than making an application that first goes to the planning commission. As you know, from having seen the TOD 1 and TOD 2 projects go through, design review came well after approval of the project. And the building permits for TOD 1 have still not been applied for. So so these, you know, the definition of qualifying approval is not when it first goes to the planning commission. It's after all of that. It's when you finally get to design review. So that's that's a long ways down the process of of paying this fee. And if the applicant is already, as city manager pointed out, the applicant is already paying city fees upfront, why not take this city fee upfront too at the same time? It just makes sense to do it then.
Okay, thank you.
It could be that Mr. Muzzi might have other comments.
I see him with his phone, but I don't know if that means he's trying to dial in. Mr. Muzzi, I can see you, but I can't tell what to do.
He's trying to dial in.
Okay. City clerk, do we have a technical issue we can help with here?
No, it looks like he is unmuted, so I don't know why it's not
I I don't think he has a microphone on his camera, so he's trying to call in.
Could you give him the call in number?
Elaine, do you have that? I know I don't have it.
So the phone number, I can send that to him directly and I will also read it out. Is 1-669 900 9128. The meeting ID is 876 I will be emailing him the information as well.
Can I make one quick comment before you?
Please, go ahead, Ms. Councilman.
Ms. Castman, would would you recommend changing that definition of a qualifying approval to be more consistent with how Mr. Mata described the process?
You know what, I am looking at this right now and and we've had these recent discussions with Ms. Fogarty and her client. I I do think that qualifying approval, that that definition should probably be changed or another one included. I can see in section four that the term qualifying approval is used. And there in section four, it says a property owner receiving a qualifying approval must pay the full amount of the fee.
And in section five as well.
As section five, so I am thinking since we're we are making some of these changes kind of late in the game, that we may want to be sure that this resolution is consistent. If we are going to change to, it says, if we're going to, if we're going to make it, are we going to make it prior to the first qualifying approval? Or are we going to say prior to the time of the first governmental approval? I mean, those are two different ideas. I I'm wondering what is what is staff proposing here?
Our proposal and recommendation is prior to approval.
Okay, so that so it's not the qualifying approval, right? Because qualifying approval is later in the game.
Yeah, it could be discretionary permit, as we've discussed, it might be, you know, architectural design review permit. Or it could be a simple, you know, building permit that doesn't actually require a discretionary permit. I can't really think of anything in the specific plan area that that would happen because most of them, any any new development project will require discretionary review. Which is the planning application, which is different than just a building application, building permit.
But I think we do have Vince on us, but go ahead, Joan, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, doesn't doesn't the planning commission need to approve the project before there's a building permit issued?
They do, that is correct.
Okay, so I mean, I do think we we need to clarify what the staff would like to propose. If it is prior to, you know, if if you want to propose that we would approve, we would insist on the payment prior to the first governmental approval, you know, maybe our, we would have leverage by saying we're not going to notice the project for a hearing and approval before the planning commission unless the fee is paid. I mean, we we could use that as our leverage.
I think that's the way, Roscoe, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way we have it proposed currently.
Yeah, the the, this was intended to capture the first discretionary approval. And it also includes building permit to to capture potential projects that may utilize state law, such as SB 35.
Right. Well, do you think we need to broaden the qualifying approval definition, Roscoe, to to include first governmental approval?
That that would be sufficient.
I I think it would help to clarify, the way it's defined now, it does anticipate that in some circumstances what is defined here, the 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 design review or the building permit could occur after what may be a first governmental approval, right?
Right, yeah, I think clarifying the governmental approval would at least satisfy planning division.
But you wouldn't necessarily charge that fee, or would you charge that fee before, say, for example, a study session behind the planning commission? No.
Well, if it's prior to the first governmental approval, it could happen at the study session, it could have at any time between the submittal or actually any time between they could even potentially submit it before the application submittal. It just has to happen at the very, at the very, at least by the by the time before they get the governmental approval, that's planning.
So basically, as as it's worded today, it gives you a lot of flexibility and discretion as to when to actually assess that fee. It's anywhere between application begins up until the time before the first actionable hearing.
Right. Yes.
I'm seeing double. There's two Vincis.
Yeah, I'm on the phone, I think I'm in on the phone, can you hear me? Okay. If I might. My understanding that we we are about to apply for a permit with the county, with the city. And my understanding is that cost of that is $2,299. Before, when, after we submit that amount, the the staff has 30 days to review it and to determine whether our application is complete. I would say that is governmental action. I would say it's reasonable at that time for an applicant to put up his fee for what would otherwise be environmental clearance. Both Republic Urban and my project had to do that in order to even start the process. It took us three years to go through that process. New developers coming in will not have to do that. This, it's a cost of development that they know if they go to another location, they may have to do an environmental impact report, it's a big cost. The benefit of the environmental impact report that we did has already given those property owners an added value. So in a sense, in equity, it should be taken out at the time the application is accepted. That would provide a couple of things. We are in an inflationary environment and are going to continue to be in one going forward. I would like to get my dollars back when they're worth something, not in 20 years. And this fee is only paid once by the developer that comes in and they can't come in on a minor project, it's a construction project. And it has to comply with the Millbrae Station area specific plan. So anybody coming in is coming in for a big project. The example that was given by staff was a 35,000 square foot parcel. There's only one 35,000 square foot parcel. The city owns it. It's the city parking lot and hopefully the property that it'll get back from BART. Nobody has a parcel that big, nobody's going to pay $40,000. So I think, you know, from a timing standpoint, from an equity standpoint and from a cost standpoint, and I think you should take it once the project has been submitted and the application has been accepted. I think you, at that point, the developer knows they've they've met the criteria. They may not have a project, but they know they've met the criteria for having it processed. That's it, thank you.
City manager? I gotta say, I'm a little frustrated here. I mean, both sides could go back and forth, both sides have very good things and you're asking us to make a decision and it's 9:30. And I don't know why this didn't happen before it came to us. So I'm I'm frustrated and
I I think you have a situation that that Mr. Muzzi is a property owner, has his attorney here and and they're making their case. What we've done as staff is presented our recommendation to the council this evening, which I believe compromises both in terms of Mr. Muzzi's needs as well as an applicant that may be coming in, you know, for economic development purposes, that we don't want to front load, you know, their cost or be too burdened on somebody that is applying for an application. So I think the way we proposed it is our recommendation. I appreciate Ms. Fogarty's position here and advocating for her client. But that's what she's doing, and I think that our recommendation, our policy is sound. There is not a conflict between the ordinance and the resolution. And I recommend that the city council adopt our recommendation, the ordinance and resolution, secondary, the ordinance and resolution as we presented it. We think that is a good compromise.
Okay, so I I
Let me say one other thing for the record, in terms of the calculation of what is going around with Mr. Muzzi even before I got here. And I am also confident in the numbers that our finance department has come up with that we are using as the cost for the EIR and the specific plan. I will also go on the record to say that somehow it was coined that this is a loan to the city. Now, this was at the total benefit of Mr. Muzzi and TOD 2. They benefited greatly and that's why I think they took took the obligation. Now, state law allows us to reimburse them. But this is not a loan to the city, this is absolutely at the benefit 100% of the property owner.
Stop.
Hopefully, we can close the public hearing.
Stop. There's two council members, or at least one council member I haven't heard from. I can't quite tell where Mr. Fung is, I think I know where Mr. Hollibur is. The vice mayor or Gina, are questions, comments, Councilwoman Pappen? Other than I think we're both frustrated.
I voted against the specific plan to begin with. I would go with the staff recommendation, but it's, you know, we're going back and forth and back and forth and all around and it sounds
And we're gonna, we're gonna move this on.
I would appreciate it if legal counsel, we had this done beforehand, though. This is getting frustrating.
Well, in all fairness, we had it done and now we are trying to address the concerns that have just been recently made.
I I get that, but it's how can we move ourselves forward tonight?
In being responsive to Mr. Muzzi and Ms. Fogarty, that did change. What was originally presented to you was fine. Now, I think I I am thinking that we need to be a little clearer about what a qualifying approval means, actually, because I think that definition is based on what our original desire was. I mean, we felt that under our new laws of 330, the encouragement of housing, that I think staff felt that a real clear mark, milestone, is design review or building permit, and they felt very comfortable that that would be the best time to apply this fee reimbursement requirement across the board. Now, we are trying to accommodate a late submitted, you know, not late, but a request has been submitted for the hearing. And so I I think in accommodating that, there may be some need to adjust that definition as it's used in this resolution.
So does that mean we continue the public hearing and come back in two weeks?
Well, I I wish I had a chance to talk with Tom and Roscoe before this because I I do think that a qualifying approval means that what we could say is the first design review permit or the building permit or the first local governmental agency approval, whichever occurs first. Roscoe, would that do it?
Well, so so if I can jump in here, we have spent a lot of time with Mr. Connor and 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 another attorney. And I think that this is confusing. So first of all, there's another party to this, and that's Republic Urban. Republic Urban has no issue with our recommendation. As a matter of fact, communication with them is that they support the staff's recommendation. So I think we also need to keep in mind that there's also, you know, Republic Urban and TOD 2 that has a cost for reimbursement in this also. And I think I think if the public hearings closed, the advocacy of Mr. Muzzi and his attorney have been heard. Staff is standing by its recommendation. We spent a lot of time and hours on this to get it where it is this evening. And and we are standing by our recommendation and we requested the city council move forward with staff's recommendation.
Okay, with that, can I have a motion to close public hearing?
And one other thing too, and this is the reason why we have a resolution, right? So so the ordinance sets forth the implementing legislation, but it's actually the resolution that is a dynamic document that as things may change or, you know, if Mr. Muzzi does present us some compelling reason why the number should change, we can easily bring that resolution back to the city council. Doesn't require a full blown public hearing or an ordinance amendment.
Okay, Councilman Hollibur.
Thank you, yes, I I agree with Ms. Castman. I think we need a little bit more time to clean this language up, especially the definition of a qualifying approval or first governmental approval. Because I think as it's written right now, you know, the prospective developer could say, well, I haven't, you know, I don't have a design review permit yet or a building permit yet, therefore I'm not going to pay. So I I think we need to be much more clear about what that means. I don't feel comfortable moving this forward at this time.
I may, Madam Mayor.
Please, Mr. Fung.
Now, obviously, we haven't heard from the vice mayor, but, you know, just one suggestion. Obviously, I agree with council member Hollibur that we need to have a clear definition as to what's qualifying approval means. But on the second hand, we can also look at it from the light where when would the new applicant start actually incurring these costs had these documents not been prepared ahead of their application? In this case, which, you know, obviously, Mr. Muzzi and TOD 2, Republic Urban have fronted these costs and given the added benefit and had start sort of in a way, so that they walk into a project knowing that, you know, what the environmental requirement is going to be, what mitigation they need to do, so on and so forth. It's shortened the amount of time that it will require them to put through their application. But one thing we can consider, and it's sort of a compromise, is that when we deem, when do we deem an application complete? Right? At the time where we issue such a document, for example, this application is now deemed complete and it's ready for review and and hearing, perhaps at that time, you know, we can, you know, that's sort of an official official stamp as to the status of where the project is, right? That could possibly be an avenue or sort of a timeline at which we can assess these fees, just a suggestion. But I would suggest that we have the staff clear up these definitions. And if the applicant, you know, we're not applicant, I mean, Mr. Muzzi and his attorney, Ms. uh, Ms. Fogarty, a little bit of time for their advocacy as well, so that we can bring it back in the next year, in the next meeting.
Okay, I, I thank you, Mr. Fung. Um, which would mean, sorry, staff, we're not quite where you are. We're hearing what our attorney Joan Casman has said, that there's some language that we need to clear up. Um, I have heard another councilwoman say, just support staff right now. So right now, I, 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 I hear you. I'm trying to see if we've got three votes here. Um, I lean towards what Councilman Fung has just suggested, maybe not the particulars. I'm confused as heck right now. So.
If I may, we do have clear definitions, um, but we can provide more clarity. It's, it's on page. It, it's under what a qualifying approval is, which is the first design review permit or building permit. And we don't have any other permits in the city that, that are qualifying permits. It's either a design review permit uh, or a building permit. Um, so that's, you know, I, I don't think we can make it much clearer. I think that um, you know, we have the net increase of 1,000 square feet um, as well. And I also, if, if the council continues that just be, you know, I want Mr. Moosie to be aware that we have applications coming in. And if an application comes in and we don't have this ordinance adopted or the resolution adopted, he may miss his window for us to collect of applicants that are coming in. So um, that, that's uh, I just throw that out.
Madam Mayor, I, I'm going to take the staff's recommendation if that's going to help you.
Okay, so we've got two staff recommendation. Want to continue, uh, two a continue, or no, want to continue, Ruben, also staff. I, I, I understand the point that now there's some language confusion. Can any of this be worked out?
Yeah. Let me clarify. There really isn't language confusion. If you look at the clause in the ordinance, it says unless otherwise stated in a resolution. So, so now we have a resolution before you that says that the fee will be paid um, at first design, a design review or building permit. So it, it, it works. It does work. I mean, the issue is uh, it, you know, is the council prepared and satisfied with the staff recommendation, which has been well thought out? Or, you know, um, y- you've had comments now and uh, you know, they, the developer, Vince and, and Janet have every right to present their view in the hearing and they have presented that and so I guess the council needs to decide whether they want to go with what is stated in the resolution. I was confused because I was hearing, I thought that there, there might be a desire to, to move it.
Well, I kind of, I kind of heard the same thing too, Joan. So, but, so let me, let me play this.
But I think we're fine on the record.
Okay.
And then this says the resolution can determine, your resolution right now before you says that it would be paid at the time of design review or the issuance of the building permit. That's what it says. So I think that the council's decision right now is, is that, is that a timing? That's the staff recommendation and do you want to accept the staff recommendation?
Well, just for a process question then, we need to close the public hearing.
Correct.
And then council can debate and we can vote yes or no right there. If we vote against staff's recommendations, we would have to do a, a new hearing?
You could continue it with the.
You can continue this.
And what I would. Okay, that's just my question in process. So what would be the language to continue that would still allow us to vote and see if you've got enough votes tonight?
Mayor, what I would do in terms of procedure and Robert's rules of order is stop this debate and call for a motion. And if you get a second, then you can open up for discussion.
Okay, but we haven't closed public hearing yet. My question is.
Close the public hearing. Second.
There we go. Vote for motion and second. Thank you.
I would recommend following that procedure now. Is there a motion?
Oh, is there a?
Or a motion to.
I believe you need to take a vote on the public hearing closure.
Could you please call, uh, roll call please for the vote?
Councilmember Hollibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Just to be clear, this is to, this is a motion to close the public hearing, correct?
Correct. That's all. Just procedural.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Pappen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay, now, is there a motion? Or Joan?
Yeah, so I think the next issue is your ordinance. Right? I, I, I think we're good with the ordinance. We don't want to pass the resolution until we have the ordinance.
Correct. And the city manager said already.
And then enactment of the ordinance, which is the foundation for the resolution.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? This does not include the fee approval.
Mayor, if I may, technically, it's a motion to waive the second reading. This is the second.
That's right.
The ordinance.
I have a question.
So. Um, just. I, I, I heard a move in a second and then Councilman Hollibur. I didn't hear the first. Elaine, did you get that?
I believe um, the person who motioned was um, Vice Mayor Leva.
Correct. And, and second, Pappen?
It is now.
Sorry, councilwoman. Okay, Councilman Hollibur.
Just a question. Do we need to define first governmental approval under payment of fee?
In the ordinance?
Yes. Cause that could be, you know, deemed complete with uh, Councilman Fung had suggested before.
Uh, I, I, Tom will not be happy with me. I, I think.
No, no, that's, that, I, I want to clarify. I just want to, I, I don't know how much further if we, we can go list and say what it is. And so is deemed complete a governmental approval? It depends on what, what, you know, if it's an SB 330 application, if it's House Accountability Act, if it's a commercial, you know, it's, it's, it, you know, it's different under different provisions of the law now. And we, we, we can certainly go back and, and define that and put specifics to each and every.
I think that I, I, it sounds, the intention is governmental approval at any level. It could be governmental approval at, you know, the staff level, right? Is that correct, Tom?
Correct, yes, yeah.
So that would include de- deeming an application complete as a governmental approval under that way it's written now.
Uh, Roscoe was saying no.
Yes, it's, it's not an approval of the project. It's, it's an, it's an action under some provisions of the law.
But this doesn't say.
To move it, move it.
It doesn't say governmental approval of a project.
The project, application complete does not, does not mean the project is being approved in any way. It just says the, the application package has already necessary document it needs for consideration.
Correct. That's right.
Did that answer your question, Councilman group Hollibur?
Yeah, and, and the reason why I even asked, I even stated that was because usually an application such as this and that size would include environmental document in order for the application to be complete. And, you know, at that level, they would have, you know, a new applicant would have spent that money to put together their own environmental document. Has Mr. Musey and TOD2 had not spent that money to begin with. So at that time, you know, having them to reimburse the cost of these, you know, previous spending theoretically would make sense.
Hey guys, we're pushing 10 o'clock. We're going to have to vote to extend the council meeting. We've already continued some, we've already continued Parks one meeting.
Madam Mayor, I think that only happens when at 11 o'clock, but we're not.
I, I know, we're just getting close to that time and we've got four more items. So.
Right.
What else do we have? Are we ready to call a, a call of vote? Joan, do you have anything else?
I, 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 I will say, even though there could be some ambiguity to what the local governmental approval is, it's, it's clear in the ordinance. It says unless otherwise stated in an adopting resolution, we can be clear in the resolution in each case when it should be paid.
Is, our council, are you comfortable with that? Mr. Hollibur, are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable if the resolution can be changed in some way.
Okay.
I don't know if that has to be done tonight or a subsequent meeting.
I, I think that's a valid point. It may not be done tonight. So any other comments, questions on the first motion?
I believe the first motion is um, to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance as is. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So Elaine, could you please call the vote?
Of course. Um, Councilmember Hollibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you. The city council waived the second reading and adopt ordinance adding section 10.5.3170 to Title 10 of the Millbrae Municipal Code allowing the city to establish a specific plan reimbursement fee per round by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. All right, now, the second part is the resolution. Joan, are you comfortable enough with the language in it to move forward tonight or should there be more discussion?
I am very comfortable with the language in it. It is, it is what the staff has recommended. Um, it, it is not what's being requested by the developer, but is what, what the staff is recommending.
Okay, comments from council? Okay, seeing no comments, may I have a motion?
Can I make a comment?
Please, Mr. Hollibur.
I, I've just heard different interpretations of the way qualifying approval has been written and defined here. Um, and I think the reference to the first design review permit or building permit i- is inconsistent with the way that Mr. Mata described uh, how the fee would be. The timing of when the fee would be collected, he, he stated it would be before a planning commission hearing. Um, these actions are typically taken after a planning commission hearing or possibly after a council hearing. Um, so with that, I don't feel comfortable approving it the way it's kind of written.
If I may jump in, I, I think it's fine if the city council wants to continue the resolution now that you've adopted the ordinance and the second reading. We can continue the resolution for two weeks, come back and um, and, and, and clarify, you know, some of the issues that Councilmember Hollibur and others have stated.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Do I look like there's consensus to bring this back in two weeks?
Fine.
Okay.
I move to uh, continue this resolution and bring it back in two weeks after giving the.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Do we have to do a formal action on that or just continue?
It's certainly, it wouldn't, you don't have to, but it wouldn't hurt. Um, just to make clear that we're going to be bringing it right back to you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
If anyone reads this record and sees there was a hearing, they will know that it hasn't been resolved.
Okay, so we, thank you, Mr. Fung. We have a, a motion. Fung, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Hollibur. Any discussion? City clerk, could you call the question, please?
Councilmember Hollibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city council um, continue the resolution to March 9th meeting.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, moving on, existing business number eight. Adoption of the ordinance repealing chapter 6.40, the Millbrae Municipal Code and adopting a new 6.0 on disposable food service ware by food facilities and city facilities. Staff report. Hello, Ms. Kelly.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Megan Kelly and also compliment her on the work that she's done um, in between the last meeting and this meeting, uh, reaching out to some of our local businesses that are part of her report and, and the great work that she's done on this ordinance. So would like to introduce uh, Ms. Megan Kelly.
Great, thank you, city manager and um, good evening, Mayor Snyder and council members. May I get my slides up? One moment. Okay, so yes, as we know, I am presenting on the adoption of the disposable food service ware ordinance. And to give a brief background, when we last spoke about a month ago at the January 26 city council meeting, staff presented a report introducing this ordinance for adoption. At that meeting, community members and several high school students from around the Bay Area spoke in support of this ordinance. A number requested that the ordinance become operative before the end of 2021 and council also discussed this. And the city council voted to waive the first reading with the intent to adopt the ordinance after the results of the uh, County of San Mateo Board of Supervisors meeting, which took place two weeks ago on February 9th. Um, at that meeting, they were expected to vote on whether to delay the implementation of their ordinance. They did in fact vote to delay that start of the ordinance to March 25th, 2022 due to, due to the economic impacts of COVID-19 and are encouraging other cities to do the same. And the proposed ordinance this evening reflects that date. Following that meeting, um, staff conducted additional outreach to the seven boba shops in Millbrae to confirm they had received all the information we had sent them previously, just really talked to them, discussed details and answer any questions they had had. And really overall, shops were definitely familiar with the ordinance. They had received a postcard in January and a letter last March. And overall, they also expressed ability to comply with the proposed ordinance. Some actually reported already using some of the um, fiber based and compostable products like bamboo straws, wind spoons, paper um, boxes. There were some concerns that arose. Um, specifically a one around the durability of fiber based straws and also about using a fiber based cup where you couldn't see the product. Um, and in those cases, staff spoke with them about other alternatives, you know, like for straws, there's bamboo, which are a little bit sturdier. Um, regarding cups, uh, many of the, it wasn't always clear to all the boba shop owners that the clear plastic film over top, actually lids are not included in the ordinance. So they could still use a fiber based cup with that clear lid. Um, and we could help, we would work with them essentially. Technical assistance from ourselves and also from the county to help them find the best alternatives. We also were able to give out about around 700 reusable stainless steel straws to the interested shops just for them to try out and share with their customers. In addition, the reference of the word Styrofoam was removed from the ordinance following a comment from the January 26th meeting. The ordinance will become effective 30 days after adoption and operative and enforced. At the same time, the counties will do so on March 25th, 2022. And upon adoption of the ordinance, staff will continue to conduct additional outreach to the affected local businesses. So the recommended action for this evening is to waive the second reading and repeal chapter 6.40 of the Millbrae Municipal Code and adopt an ordinance adding a new chapter 6.40 entitled regulating the use of disposable food service ware by food facilities and city facilities. And that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Uh, comments from council?
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Uh, please, Councilman Fung.
Uh, I want to thank um, Ms. Kelly and the staff for spending the extra time and doing the extra hours for all the um, you know, boba shops. Thank you very much for doing that. I appreciate it. Uh, great work. It's uh, nicely done. So just want to commend the staff for that.
Thank you, Mr. Fung. Uh, Councilwoman Pappen?
Ms. Kelly, thank you very much. Greatly appreciate all the work. Move approval.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Pappen.
Second?
Okay, the, so are we waiving?
This is that when we're, we're, we're frustrated, we're moving slightly too fast.
We're, we're waving this, we can do it in one or one motion. We're waving the second reading and enacting the ordinance. Correct, Kelly? We, yeah. Megan, we are.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. So we can do it in one, one action, but this is the last action to put the ordinance in effect, uh, not in effect, in place. And the date as we know is next March.
Um, Vice Mayor Oliva, did you have any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have, I have a couple. Um, uh, again, I, I really appreciated the staff report and the extra work you did. Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Um, really easy reading on it too, so terrific. I am wondering, their Styrofoam is still appearing in the worksheet, attachment A, I believe it was. But I'm wondering if you would be willing to meet with both the Millbrae community. But I'm wondering if you would be willing to meet with both the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, who could possibly help with that, and that is our Environmental Committee, and possibly with Councilwoman Papin, with the Economic Vitality Committee, so that we're looping in the two committees that can assist with the rollout of this program.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Yeah, we'll be.
I know that MCAC, Community Enhancement, would love to have you come and speak with them. And I hope that we're going to have a whole webpage on the city web. That's something that Councilman Fung and I will be looking at is our communication tools to make sure that you've got the tools that you need to reach out to people and that we've got the language translation ability, or will we get that from the county?
Yeah, so we currently do have a website that we've been updating based on, you know, introduction and all that. We have, currently have the previous summary up there. And yes, everything, we'll, we'll be sending a letter out in a few weeks to all the affected businesses in, in three languages, so that will all be available as well.
Okay.
And the county, I mean, after that, the county will also be providing additional outreach and technical assistance to just continue with that outreach.
The one thing that I brought up when this came to us the first time was cooperative purchasing. And that's something that MCAC, we can dive into, but, or it's something that could happen at the Economic Vitality Committee, although it might be new terminology. But it's something that, you know, we've used in the recycling field for decades, and it's time to probably bring back cooperative purchasing to help our merchants be able to get the best price for these items, because they're going to have a price premium on them because they're going to match the ordinance. So if we can continue working on that to help our, our various food vendors on that. With that, I am very happy that we're going to approve this. As you read in the staff report, the county did stay with the enforcement of March 25th, 2022. So we have almost 13 months, or a little over 13 months, to get all of our restaurants and food service providers ready. I'd like to see us make it well before that time. So with that, no further comments. Elaine, could you call the vote, please?
I'm sorry, did I miss the motion?
Yeah, there was a motion by Councilwoman Papin, seconded by Councilman Fung.
Waive the first read or whatever, the second reading.
Second, yeah, waive second reading and.
Thank you. Councilmember, oh, sorry. Councilmember Holber?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The City Council waived the second reading and repealed chapter 6.4 of the Millbrae Municipal Code and adopted ordinance adding a new chapter, new chapter 6.4 entitled regulating the use of disposable food service ware by food facilities and city facilities by vote of five to zero.
Excellent, thank you. And Ms. Kelly, congratulations on your first new appointment and your first ordinance. May there be many more.
Thank you.
Okay. That was eight. And next item up is item nine, to adopt by motion the approval of the conceptual sketch for the mural on the skate park wall. And this is an action item. So I hope we have Ms. McKenzie, Ms. Brady. City Manager, do we have staff presenting?
Yes, I am here.
Yes, Mayor.
There you are.
Introduce our wonderful Recreation Director, Ms. McKenzie Brady.
All right, please let me know if you do not see my screen. I am McKenzie Brady, Recreation Director. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I will be presenting on our Millbrae Skate Park mural project, which has been a fantastic project that we, we just got started here recently in the last quarter of last year. Just going through the agenda here, we will review the background and timeline for this project, review the artist who was chosen by the ad hoc subcommittee, the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, as well as the City Council, review the work plan and the theme and keywords that have been approved, review the skate park conceptual sketch, and then see some close-ups, some details of that conceptual sketch, and then we will move into next steps. Just review of the background. On September 8th, 2020, City Council recommended pursuing a mural on the exterior walls of the skate park. The next week, the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee members formed a skate park mural ad hoc subcommittee. And over the following three months, the subcommittee's process included identifying the wall in canvas, identifying the fundraising budget, the potential, the potential artists via a survey, as well as conversation with the subcommittee, and identifying the theme and keywords for the art. On December 11th, the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee approved the artists and theme recommendations. And I will review those with you here shortly. And on January 12th, the City Council approved this artist and theme recommendations as well. We staff worked with the artist and set up an agreement for a conceptual sketch. On February 12th, the sketch was presented to the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. The committee recommended approval to the City Council with minor modifications and input for the artist. And on February 23rd, this, that's today, the conceptual sketch is being brought back to City Council for review and approval. If this is approved tonight, starting tomorrow, we will begin the process for fundraising for the mural. And the plan is no later than September 1st to have the mural completed. Just a reminder, the selected artist is Brian Barnacle. So this individual is approved by Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and the Millbrae City Council after recommendation from the ad hoc subcommittee. So that is an image of Brian, and then that first mural there is the Good Life mural adjacent to the San Mateo Caltrain. And the other mural is on site in Santa Cruz. As a reminder, the approved theme is fun in the sun, and the approved keywords, which end up being the boundaries for which the artist designs his, his mural within. So those keywords are vibrant, happiness, health, movement, flow, and inclusion. And we really wanted all of these words to embody what we felt like the skate park and the spur trail and individuals in Millbrae were representing. And so the artist came back to us with a work, a work plan. And he noted that he wanted to create bold shapes and colors consisting of characters and movement and activity along the wall. The idea would be to activate the wall with these bold marks and colors to create a joyful and inclusive identity for the art. And he let us know that his process, the first day would be to prepare the surface with three coats of masonry paint. On days two to seven, it'd be painting the artwork. Now, I will show you the conceptual art. I will do that shortly. Something else to note is that we would like to add the western wall to the canvas. So this project first started out with just a focus on the northern wall of the Millbrae Skate Park. And that was due to the reason, if you recall, the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant to do a skate park renovation and fitness court addition. We were looking at a design to where there might be the potential for an element to be within this area along the western wall. But the, the design has changed from that point, and so now that opens that wall back up to be able to be used as a canvas. So there was discussion by the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee to include this west-facing exterior wall as well. So it'd be the northern and the western wall. And then staff recommends that the City Council consider this recommendation and move to additionally include the west wall as part of the project. And additional cost would be an additional $3,000 for this west wall.
What about the foliage?
That would be removed and transplanted into a different location. And as you can see, there are also plaques in that on the southwestern part of that wall there. And so those plaques were from the original fundraising for the skate parks. So those would be relocated as well. And here is the concept, the conceptual sketch. And as artists noted, there would be bold shapes and colors, individuals engaging in recreation. And as you can see, this is a square. It is, does not look like the wall whatsoever. So this is a concept of the types of images that would be along the wall, the types of movement, and some of the colors as well. And as you can see here, we have folks who are running, dancing, stretching, playing ball, playing tennis, jump roping, skateboarding, jumping in general, just engaging in different types of movement. And I will move forward and show you closer up images of, of this concept. And you can see this top image here, the artist added in, there's palm trees and sun, a sun and different colors throughout, and that helps to bring out the happiness that is, is one of the keywords that we were wanting within this mural. And you can also see individuals playing tennis or badminton. Here's more detail. As you can see, these are very abstract individuals. And then we asked him to present a type of mock-up that would show the size of the, the individuals along the wall. So this is the northern wall, which is adjacent to the spur trail, or parallel to the spur trail in the Millbrae Avenue. And so again, this, since this is a concept, those are not the exact individuals and the exact activities and colors that would be along the wall, but those are the types of, of images and the sizes of the folks that would be along the wall. And for next steps, staff recommends that the City Council adopt by motion the approval of the conceptual sketch for the mural on the north and west wall of the Millbrae Skate Park and direct staff to proceed with the project. That is all. Any questions? I will move back.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
I'll go back to this image so that it's on the screen for, for you to.
Okay. Councilwoman Papin?
The cubist nature here, and I, I like it. I just, there were a couple in the original. Just so we can keep some, make sure the facial definitions are more on the positive side. Some of them looked, when we originally saw this, tad bit aggressive. I think everything very good. I, I just want to make sure that we're keeping some, or actually all the facial expressions. Some of these just look a tad bit too aggressive and not with the happy or healthy part. But I, I mean, I like it. My compliments to the group for putting this together, finding the artist. I think we have some wonderful potential here, colors, everything. It's just great. So thank you.
McKenzie, and I'm sorry, Ms. Brady, in the staff report was the picture of the one grouping that, to me and to many members of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, did look too aggressive. Can you pull that up? If not, I can point it out where it is here in the square. And at Culture Arts Committee last Friday, we all agree that art is in the eye of the beholder, but when it's public art and in our times of being sensitive, that coming from different cultures, we can perceive things differently. A number of us felt that one particular grouping was a little too aggressive. So Councilman Papin, I agree with you entirely. It's the one right above that. It's that one right there. That it looks, even if that wasn't what the artist intended, it looks angry. It almost looks like it is a particular race in there. And McKenzie, what did we, we talked about it, and you were going to give direction to the artist on that?
Yes, we would request that the artist work to include maybe potentially change, changing the position of these individuals and working on the facial expression as well. As one of the boundaries and the keywords that we requested is happiness. So we would work with artists on that.
Okay, because staff also reported to MCAC that this artist can take some direction, but likes a lot of creativity. What's the right word, McKenzie? A lot of, he, he likes a lot of independence. Is the other way to.
Artistic freedom, I think you're looking for.
There we go. There we go. Thank you.
Latitude.
Latitude, yeah, I'm not sure, but again, because art is in the eye of the beholder, but as public art, we have a responsibility. Councilman Holber?
Thank you. Yes, that, this was presented at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week, and there was also a comment that this particular scene looks like a fight scene. That was the comment. So I, yeah, I agree with those comments. And then there was also another comment that it seemed, at least in the conceptual image, that aquatics were heavily, were emphasized, at least, you know, centered in it's. Unfortunately, and hopefully this will change at some point, but unfortunately, we don't really have an aquatics program, at least not a robust aquatics program in Millbrae. So maybe that's something that can be de-emphasized.
Haven't seen some of the puddles lately.
Or waiting for another sinkhole. Actually, Councilman Holber, that's exactly what MCAC said, too. But McKenzie, you had a good answer. And for me, who doesn't like how brown this is, given that it's going to be right next to Tanbark, water is one of the few mandatory blue scenes. But McKenzie, you had a perspective on that.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. My thought is that we do have Millbrae Meadows Swim, Swim Club, and we have cappuccino and mills. There are individuals who engage in recreational activities in the pool through the high schools, and then also when there's not a pandemic, our summer camp does participate in a swimming program.
Yeah, well, thank you. Unfortunately, those schools do not allow us to have some type of a, of program on their campus. That's a discussion for another day. But maybe that's, you know, something in the final mural could be not, you know, front and center. It's, it's not really a key recreation, well, amenity in, in Millbrae, even though there's, you know, a pool just a couple hundred yards from where that skate park can be. And then the question about the, was it the west wall, the, the additional wall? Yeah, I, I think, you know, it'd be interesting to see what it would look like with, you know, the, sort of a mock-up of the mural instead of the foliage there along the wall. Where would the plaques go if they were moved?
That is a great question. We have not moved forward on deciding that at this point, but we do have the facility, the building there, the bathrooms, the, the bathroom facility that is standing there. So that is something where we could put those in that location. Also, we could relocate the plaques somewhere after the renovation takes place in a more prominent location.
Okay, I mean, maybe that is something that needs to be ironed out before the final, you know, approval on the west wall. You certainly don't want to, you know, forget those that contributed to making this a part of reality.
Of course, the, similar to how we have the, the thanking everybody at the community garden sign, we could also put up something in a similar fashion.
Well, I mean, I think the plaques, you know, are more permanent or more of a monument, I think, than, you know, a steel sign. So I mean, I think if we could preserve those plaques, I think that would be ideal.
And I'm sure that there's a way to work with the artists as well to even potentially integrate them into the edge of the mural there.
McKenzie, well. Mr. Fung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. McKenzie, could you go over the cost structure on these northern and western wall, please?
Yes, as, as noted before, this would be the initial, the northern wall is a $5,000 fundraising goal and with the $500 for the sketch. And to do the western wall would be an additional $3,000, which we are, would be requesting from the city unless it is the, the goal of the council for us to continue fundraising those, those dollars as well.
Yeah, so have we had any success in that $5,000 fundraising so far? And what's your expectation? I'm under the impression that you will be successful, you'll be successful at it. And would it be possible for you guys to continue that effort and so that the whole thing could be funded by outside source?
If, if that is the wish of the council, we could definitely do that. Of course, we have not started on the, the $5,000 fundraising as we are waiting for the approval of the conceptual sketch.
Okay, I think it might take a little bit of effort on your part, but I'm pretty sure you guys will be successful at that if that can be done.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Any other comments? McKenzie, I have my checkbook right here. I'm ready to write a check. If people watching tonight want to help with Millbrae's first in the 21st century art installation, how would they go about fundraising? Is this something we need to work out with the community foundation? how would they go about fundraising? Is this something we need to work out with the community foundation? The Millbrae Community Foundation?
No, not necessarily. We could take the funds directly through our recreation system, our software. We would need to set up a fundraising campaign and I would be working with the skate park user group to go about this.
Excellent. Okay, if there are no further council comments, there is public comment. I see Mr. Motsek.
Whoa, can you hear me?
You're coming in great.
All right. Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for letting me speak today. Thank you so much for embracing public art. I was a part of this ad hoc subcommittee that worked for several months to identify the general direction and and artists that we were considering for this project. Brian Barnaclo ended up being being the winner by a vote. Ironically, Brian Barnaclo was an artist that I worked with in downtown San Mateo when I was the vice president of the Downtown San Mateo Association. We also started a downtown arts committee and that's where that's Glenn and where Brian did the Good Life mural that is at San Mateo train station. One thing I can say is that Brian's process is very much like freedom and freedom flowing. These sketches that he submitted are very loose. And just to give you a general, I guess, feeling on the energy, I will definitely say that you can trust the artist's process. If you if you look at his portfolio, if you spend some time in San Francisco and go around or just check out the the Good Life mural, he he doesn't create offensive content and he's also very, very hyper aware of the issues that are happening in the country and inequity and all that stuff. So his focus would be about equity. Kind of creating something that, you know, adds adds value to the culture and aesthetic of of Millbrae. And and he very much knows how important this is to the community's identity. So he's not going to come up with any any sketchy scary characters, offensive characters that are fighting. And I can just say also, you know, for the record, Tom and McKenzie have been absolutely great through this process. I just want to thank them for that. And I want to thank you all for embracing public art, especially during this time of resilience. I think public art kind of gives that feeling of we're back on our feet, we're we're in a in a community that cares. And I would also ask if if the city council could vote to help sponsor that that 3K to get that western wall covered. It would just make sense to make this process as easy as possible and also for the city to invest in public art. Having this be 100% fundraised and to note the council didn't back it to throw any any city funds towards this seems honest, a little bit weak. And I would just say that I think it would show that the city is truly invested in public art and is backing this project. So that's all. Thank you very much for your consideration and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Motsek. Councilwoman Pappen, your hand is up or was that pre over previously up? Okay, where is the council in terms of a city donation? Knowing that in consent calendar, we looked at our our current revenue streams and they are not looking really good. And we have, unlike other cities, we don't yet have a developer fee that sets any money aside for public art. I have incredible faith in Ms. Brady's incredible ability to bring funding and grants in. And as I said, I'm I'm happy to help kick off a challenge for the community to back the art. I'll say I was also reading SF Airport Commission's meeting minutes and they just approved a $200,000 installation in Harvey Milk Terminal, mainly because they've got the money there, but also we're going to get through the COVID pandemic. We're going to be in a new place and the steps taken now are putting us in a position to celebrate when we can gather. And on top of it, hopefully it'll reduce some of the vandalism at the skateboard park. I see Councilman Hollibur and Councilwoman Pappen. Councilman Pappen.
Um, first, I'd like to settle the doing both walls. The north and the west wall, I think that's where we're at. I don't think we should piecemeal anything. And I believe in private fundraising, but I do think the city needs a stake in the to show some goodwill here. So even if it's $1,000 or something, I think that's a good way to start out here and it just shows whoever's going to contribute. I'm sure many of us will as well, that we can get there a lot quicker.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. Councilman Hollibur.
Thank you. I think that was a good suggestion, having some type of city contribution. But I think private fundraising would be the preferred route. I think, you know, one possible funding source, we pay, if the city were to make a contribution, can we use our park impact fees? For so it's not a general fund contribution, since this is a park facility.
It's a good idea and it's within a quarter mile of the TOD. So would it qualify for those funds? City manager?
You know, that's a good question. I'd have to research that and get back to you. Usually the development impact fees are for land acquisition and construction of facilities. So unless Joan already knows the answer, I
No, I let's look at it. I mean, they're for capital infrastructure facilities. I'm not sure painting a mural would qualify, but
Probably not. That's why they have a separate public art fee in in some of the development impact.
Right.
But but I certainly think it's a great question we can look into.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think the the legal fees to look into that are probably going to be more than
Right.
$1,000, right?
We will staff will look into it.
Give a yes or no?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I don't think anyone's going to challenge it.
We'll look into it.
Do that. But yeah, I do like the idea of painting the north, sorry, the west wall. But in a way that preserves the donor wall.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hollibur, I couldn't hear that.
No, I do support expanding the mural to include the west wall, but to preserve the donor wall as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Yes, I would support also doing the west wall as well, not piecemealing this. And I would also support Councilmember Pappen's idea that we start the fund with some amounts. And if $1,000 would start the the accounts and the fundraising to go, I would I would support that as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Fung, I know you commented earlier, where are you on on both walls and a starter fee?
Um, I think it's fine that, no, so let me just back up a little bit. I think it's important that we do this together, not as a piecemeal solution. I agree with both, you know, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Pappen on that. I just want to make sure in terms of funding, I want everybody to, I want a public to understand that, you know, we're very conscious about how to spend public funds, especially during the pandemic where we're having shortfall on, you know, in revenue. And yeah, so that's just my basic comment. It's an art piece, right? So, you know, we have to prioritize, you know, the use of public funds on stuff like that. Like the idea if the park impact fee could be used towards that goal. So but you know, I think frankly, I think, you know, it we will be successful in the end in raising private funding to pay for this. The whole thing, we're looking at what $8,000, is that correct, McKenzie?
Eighty-five hundred, if you count the 500 sketch.
Correct.
500 is already paid for, isn't it?
For the for the sketch, yes, the 500 is already paid, but that will be retro on the fundraising.
Okay, so be okay. And so the city hall fronted that $500, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it'll be privately or the overall fundraising will will pay it back. I mean, it seems like, you know, the city hall already made an initial contribution to it already. So I think I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, in that case, it sounds to me like we are in agreement with doing both walls. We're in agreement with doing a starter fund. City manager, can the city afford $1,000? And I wonder how much we spend on just removing graffiti on those walls. If that's another way of looking at a little bit of city funding now might be saving us from tagging.
Correct, yes. Yes, we can. We can find $1,000.
Okay, it sounds like we're in agreement. Can I have a motion for that?
Don't move. Second, Pappen.
So that was Vice Mayor Oliva and second by Pappen to move forward with the art and fundraising project to do both walls and for the city to commit $1,000 as the kickoff of the fundraising fund.
And carefully relocate the donor wall.
Thank you. Yes, and carefully preserve preserve the pieces and set them up in a new place.
Or keep it. Paint around it.
I haven't walked out there to look at every wall, to look at it, but we have tiled another art installation in a parking lot downtown that needs to be redone. So maybe they can both be done at the same time.
Or perhaps the artists can use the those plaques as part of their art as well, right? Maybe use it as sort of featured as a focal point. I don't know. I don't know if that's possible. Yeah.
Call for the vote. Okay, no further discussion. Um, city Elaine, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Hollibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The city council unanimously adopt by motion the approval of the conceptual sketch for the mural on the north and west wall of the Millbrae Skate Park and directed staff to proceed with project. One, city contribute $1,000 and number two, carefully relocate the donor wall.
Thank you. Excellent. And congratulations, MCAC, the ad hoc committee that included Park and Rec and public participation in that. A little painful along the way. We learned some process problems. But this is our first real piece of art. So congratulations, Millbrae, and thank you, city council. And thank you, city manager. All right, agenda item number 10. And we've got a half an hour before our hard stop. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bay Area Rapid Transit, BART, for the reconveyance of certain property interest in parcels located in the Millbrae Station area. Uh, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We have Mr. Edlow with us from the Jarvis Firm. It's been instrumental in helping us craft this agreement with BART. And also we have Mr. Harry Burrows. It's been our technical consultant. And without further ado, I will just hand it over to Mr. Burrows to take the city council through a quick presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Can everyone see the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Again, this is Harry Burrows and I'm the city's contract project manager for the TOD projects. And the item before you again is a reconveyance of the BART property interest to the city of Millbrae on the west side of the Millbrae Station. So real quickly, I thought I would give a brief chronology of the California Drive as it relates to the right of way parcels in question. So in 1998, the Millbrae area station, Millbrae Station area specific plan was approved and California Drive was identified as a vital circular vital circulation element as part of that plan. And then through 98 and 99, BART and SAM Trans and the transit agencies as part of the design and construction identified that they needed certain properties acquired from the city while also recognizing that there was a need to accommodate future California Drive on the west side of the station once that area was redeveloped. And in 2001, 99 through 2001, the agencies negotiated station access requirements resulting in two agreements. One is called a stipulated settlement agreement. The other is called the kiss and ride agreement. And they affect four critical parcels on the west side. Then in 2016, the specific plan was updated and that confirmed the alignment and the transits transit serving elements that are incorporated into California Drive. Then in 2018, the Millbrae Sarah Station project, otherwise known as TOD number one, was approved. And the approval of that development triggered clauses in those agreements for BART to relinquish the property rights back to the city for California Drive construction. And subsequent to that, the city staff and BART staff started discussions related to the return of these properties. And concurrent with that, in 2020, the city council adopted a precise alignment for California Drive. And that added further certainty in terms of the transit and access elements that will be incorporated into the roadway. And through late 2020 and into early 2021, BART and city staff has finalized the terms of a new agreement for the reconveyance of these property interests back to the city, clearing the path for the construction of California Drive. And BART approved, their board approved the terms of the new agreement subject to the preparation and finalization of easement and deed documents that are currently being worked on. And so again, these are the guiding documents that confirm an established California Drive, both the location and the transit serving components. And they're the two specific plans, the original and the update, as well as the adoption of the precise alignment in July of 2020. So as an overview, this parcel shows the four or this exhibit shows the four parcels in question. The two yellow parcels are currently owned by BART. D3700 is this long parcel adjacent to the station and the platform. And you can see underneath the shading of this parcel, hopefully on your view of this exhibit, the edge of the platform roughly where my cursor is following right now. So everything to the west or to the top side of the cursor here is the BART platform. And then the area to below it is existing, what was formerly called Railroad Avenue, which will be the future California Drive. Then the two purple parcels are parcels that are owned by the city. They will they have currently have easements on them to BART for the kiss and ride facilities. You can see those facilities vaguely underneath the shading here and the edge of the platform right along this line here. So this is essentially the same exhibit with an overlay of California Drive shown on it in white. And so you can see there's definitely an area to the east of California Drive that respects the existing platform and the station facilities all along this edge here. So in summary, D3700 is currently owned by BART. The agreement calls for an irrevocable right of way to be granted to the city for roadway purposes for California Drive. And this is subject to FTA approval process. The original stipulated settlement agreement called for this to be transferred in fee to the city. However, late in the negotiation process with BART last year, it was determined that FTA approval was necessary for that that property transfer to occur. And it became evident that that was going to be a very lengthy and onerous process involving appraisals and additional work to be done because FTA needed to get reimbursed. If they were going to transfer the property, they would need to get reimbursed for the cost that they expended originally for not only the purpose of the acquisition of the right of way, but the facilities that are within that parcel. So as a compromise, we have agreed in concept to the granting of an irrevocable right of way in lieu of fee title, which would allow us to construct and operate California Drive in perpetuity on over that portion of parcel D3700. And parcel D Linden was also subject to the stipulated agreement. And consistent with the original agreement, that fee title will be transferred to the city. City will grant back to BART easements for any utilities that serve the station that are within that parcel. And then these two purple parcels are known as D Railroad and D 3125. Again, these are owned by the city. BART will relinquish their easement rights back to the city and the city will in turn grant fee back to BART for the portion of the parcel here on the east side of the white line, California Drive, that contains the BART facilities, mostly primarily the platform. And also grant back to BART any easements that are within the roadway or within these parcels and those easements. And those easements are for utilities that are known right now of a fiber optic line and waterline facilities that serve the station. So just in summary, the new city BART agreement, I'm not going to cover these first bullet points because I just went over them. In addition to the property transfers.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Burrows.
No problem. So in addition to the property transfer details that are described here in the first three bullet points, the agreement also specifies the transit serving and access facilities, and those include bus turnouts and passenger drop-off and loading areas, transit shuttle staging, ride chairs, taxis to be included in the final roadway design. And it also specifies a timing obligation specifically related to the FTA approval process and the transfer of titles and easements between the two agencies. So this is an exhibit that will actually be attached to the agreement. And this just shows in detail what these transit-serving facilities are. And I won't go through them individually because I think we covered this in a previous discussion with, with, with the City Council, but they in essence show these various different colored items are certain categories of transit-serving facilities, whether they be loading, unloading zones, bus, storage areas, bus drop-off areas, taxi and parking. So in terms of next steps and timing, well, since the approval of the terms of the agreement by the BART Board on January 28th, BART has continued their discussions with FTA and we've refined the final agreement language related to the mechanics of the right-of-way irrevocable transfer over parcel D-3700. In addition, BART and city staff have researched and defined the existing BART facilities and utilities that are subject to the easements from the city to BART after the property transfers. And this is prior to actual field surveys being performed and those field surveys are scheduled for next week. The city surveyor will complete the survey work, a plat and legal description for the FTA parcel. And that schedule will be completed by this Friday. And the city's legal council has also completed the deed language for the property transfers and the irrevocable right-of-way easement and the platform and utility easements. The FTA approval process is a critical path item in all of this. We're dealing with a federal agency. BART has had discussions with them numerous times here over the course of the last six to eight weeks. We've been told that once they receive the final plat and legal description from us, it's about an eight-week process for their, to respond and approve. But again, I'll caveat that what we are dealing with the federal agency. So just something to keep in mind. In terms of additional work, we've got the field surveys and preparation of the plats and legals to provide the precise location of BART facilities and easements for the utilities on those parcels. That work is ongoing. The field work is scheduled to start next week. And the field work and the preparation of the plats and legals related to that will be done in a four to six-week timeframe. And then the final city and BART review hopefully will be occurring within, you know, two-week timeframe after that. And we anticipate that given these, this timeframe that, you know, we'll get the final deed from FTA for D-3700 parcel and the execution and recordation of all documents in late April of 2021. We should have the work that's related to just between BART and the city done, hopefully by early April. And there's a list here of essentially all the exhibits that will be attachments to the agreement. And without going into a great amount of detail on this, essentially items C1 and C2 are related to the FTA process. And the remaining items D through F are under the city and BART's control. And those are the items that are occurring now. Both, both of these processes will be occurring concurrently. And again, the hope is to have everything completed and wrapped up by the end of April. So in summary, recommendation is that the City Council authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement with BART. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ed or Tom and open it up for questions or discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be happy to address any questions of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Council, any questions, comments?
Move approval.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve.
In a second.
Off, and a second from Vice Mayor Oliva. Elaine, do you need us to read this? Or do you want to read it after we vote?
I will read it after you vote.
Okay, can you call the?
Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Holiber.
Aye.
Councilmember Fun.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute agreement with the Bay Area Rapid Transit District, BART, for the reconveyance of a, of certain property interests in parcels located in the Milbury Station area, either 05 to 0.
Excellent. Can I say congratulations to the City Manager, to community development staff, to Mr. Burrows, Mr. Lowe? I don't want to leave anybody out. This has been a long, hard. To me, this is very exciting and I want to thank. I know we still have other issues to work with BART, but yay, big step forward. Thanks to you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Hey, we're on the last item. It is the parks issue that was pushed from last time. I doubt it's going to finish in 14 minutes. City Council, do you want to extend now or see how fast Mackenzie can speak?
See how fast she can go. Let's go.
Yeah, fast, yeah. I want to go past 11.
Okay.
Mackenzie, I am really sorry that we've pushed you to this again. Please go. Go as quickly as you can.
All right, Mayor, members of the City Council, let me go ahead and get this started. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right. Again, thank you for, for having me. Mackenzie Brady, Recreation Director. I'll be reporting on the Parks Improvement Grant status. There are a number of grants I want to update you all on. The Mills Skate Park Renovation and Fitness Court Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, the Marina Vista Park Playground Kaboom Let's Play Grant, Mills Estate Park Prop 68 Statewide Park Program Grant, the Lomita Spur Trail Disc Golf Course Update, as well as the Milbury Dog Park Update. All right, and the Mills Skate Park Renovation Fitness Court Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. If you recall, in January of 2020, this is last year, project was approved for submitted by the City Council. And in early fall 2020, we learned from the Department of Parks and Recreation, OGAU's Office, as Office of Grants and Local Services in Sacramento, that they would recommend the National Park Service for review and funding consideration for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for this project. Actually, today, we just received approval from the State OGAU's Office and Office of Store Preservation for Section 106 and Area of Potential Effect. So we have sent over the consultants' findings regarding the historic properties and tribal consults. And then, once this is reviewed by the state, it will be sent to National Park Service for review and hoping, since there is no significant findings with tribal or historical properties on site, it would receive notice and a concurrent letter back from the National Park Service fairly quickly. So hopefully by late spring 2021 that we would be able to proceed with the project. And once we received all of this funding and a concurrent letter, the project must be completed no later than March 31, 2024. Just as a reminder, the total project cost is about $580,000. And half of that is coming from, 50% can come from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. So just about $289,000. The rest comes from the Prop 68 per capita funds from the Peninsula Healthcare District, National Fitness Campaign, Milbury Lions Club, Milbury Community Foundation, South San Francisco Scavenger, and a small amount from city staff, labor and materials. Now I'll show you the concept level site plan as a reminder. You can see the skate park there, running parallel to Milbury Avenue and adjacent to the sidewalk by the skate park would be the location of the new fitness court, a 40 by 40-foot slab that would allow individuals to workout free of charge. And moving on to the Marina Vista Park Playground Kaboom Let's Play Grant. So this has been an ongoing project for the last few years, trying to get updated agreements with SFO for Marina Vista and Bayside Manor Parkland, as well as the agreement with Kaboom. So this product would serve the Lomita Park Elementary School and surrounding areas ranging from about two to 12, but more so in the two to five-year-old range. And so Kaboom is an entity that teams up with communities to help develop these play spaces to give every chance, every kid a chance to thrive, socially, emotionally and mentally and physically as well. So we have been continuing to work with Kaboom on finalizing this agreement. And as it's gone over a number of years, their agreements have changed. And so it's been kind of longstanding situation going on. But once, once this is approved and agreed upon, we would be responsible for fundraising or providing $8,500 towards the cost of the playground equipment and the rest would be provided. And then the city would organize a community build day to build this equipment under the supervision of Kaboom. So similar to how we built the garden in a day, this would be a build day for the playground equipment. What's also fantastic about Kaboom is a few years ago, they were interested in providing multi-sport courts for both Marina Vista and Bayside Manor, and they now have an official grant for that process. So if this works out, we will apply for a playground grant for Bayside Manor and then move on for multi-sport courts as well. And just to show you, this is the current equipment that is at Marina Vista Park that would be updated. Moving on, the Mills Estate Park Prop 68 Statewide Park Program. This was a project that we started back in the summer of 2020. The state released a notice of funding authorization regarding the last round of funding. And staff reached out to Parks and Recreation Commission to request insight on an appropriate project. In September 2020, the City Council approved submitting a grant application for Mills Estate Park. And since that time, Parks and Recreation Commissioners and staff have met virtually with community members on six different occasions and also solicited a community-wide survey so that we could gather input and determine a conceptual design. Part of this grant process is, weighs very, very heavily on community input. So with that community input, we determined that the recreation features would include a jogging walking loop, graded open space natural area, so a grassy area in the middle, picnic barbecue areas, a playground for children, an adult fitness station, lighting, which would allow for safety features as well as shade structures over the picnic area so that folks could use them during the hottest times of the day or, or when it's raining out, as well as informational signage for an airport bay lookout. So this grant is due on March 12th, so that is coming up. We are finalizing it now. And with the completed sequel report due by June 12th. And so if granted funding for this project, that would have to be completed no later than March 31st, 2025. And here is the conceptual design, which was created from all of the community input. So the meetings as well as the surveys. So you can see, coming off of a, we have Sebastian Drive down here and then a walkway, which is the, the current walkway that is there. But coming in, you would have a jogging, walking loop, a fitness station, playground. We have a park shelter here over picnic sites, another park shelter here over picnic sites, more picnic sites and barbecue locations. We have a prefab toilet, drinking fountain for the canines as well, numerous cameras throughout the park in a bio-retention basin and significant amount of native plantings as well. Moving on, the Lomita Spur Trail Disc Golf Course Update. So in the spring of 19, the Rotary approached the city looking to help with a project via grant funding. And what came from that was the possibility of a disc golf course. So in February last year, the Rotary worked with staff to have a demo day along the spur trail on Milbury Avenue. But based on that demo day, it, it, it went very well, but the Parks and Recreation Commission requested that the designer and staff study additional park sites because they had concerns about the potential hazards for users being in such a, a narrow area along the spur trail. So then the pandemic happened, of course, and so we got our bearings again. And in December of 2020, the designer issued a report for both Lomita section of the spur trail and Mills Estate Park. And in January 21, just last month, Parks and Recreation Commission issued approval to start community meetings for the location of the Lomita section of the spur trail, move forward on the design. And so that first community meeting will be taking place soon on March 2nd. And just as a reminder, the total project cost to install this disc golf course would be about $12,500. And $8,000 have come from Rotary International, $2,500 from the Peninsula Healthcare District, and then $2,000 from the Milbury Community Foundation. This would be the proposed basket tee layout. And if you are not familiar with this, the circled numbers would be the locations of the baskets and the lines would be the direction of travel for the and so the beginning of the line opposite the circled number would be where the, the tee starts out. And so you can see that this would be a very small course area, only eight, eight holes, if you will. And just right at the entrance of the Lomita section of the spur trail. So we will be having a community meeting on March 2nd and we've notified all the neighbors in this area. We want to hear from them what their thoughts are on having this very beginner disc golf course in this location. Again, this is very conceptual. Those are not the exact locations. Those are the general locations. Moving right along, the hot topic here, the Milbury Dog Park. So in 2008, City, the city received approval from the SFPUC to use the easement off of Green Hills Drive between the Church of Latter Day Saints and Green Hills Park to use that space for a dog park. But recently, the city received a letter back from the property director denying the use of this property for a dog park. So unfortunately, that is where we are. We are continuing to move forward and pursue this right-of-way. But in the meantime, we're looking at other locations. So the spur trail location south of Richmond Drive is one location, and I will show images of this shortly. Green Hills Park proper, so in the park itself, next to the SFPUC property, the temporary recreation center location, once the new facility is built, so right in the parking lot behind City Hall, and then also Monterey Linear Park. And as a reminder, TOD 2's dog park is currently under construction. So after we looked at all of these locations and the, the quality of the locations, we, we noted that due to poor drainage issues at the spur trail location south of Richmond Drive, that the best location and the simplest location to bring forward a dog park sooner rather than later would be Monterey Linear Park. As you can see here, this first image in the top left-hand corner would be the location for the SFPUC easement in Green Hills Park. So this easement is right in this location and that is where we had designed to put the large dog area. And you can come over here into the park itself and that would be where the small dog park area is. So we are still hoping to move forward on this design with approval from SFPUC. We are still working on that. And the next image here shows the spur trail south of Richmond Avenue. Richmond Avenue is over here on the right, Taylor's on the left. And this would be the location that we were looking at. It's a very large area. But unfortunately or fortunately, there is an underground spring right here that causes a very wet area. So we would have to look at fixing those drainage issues. So the, the best answer for now that staff has looked at is creating a design for Monterey Linear Park. So creating a large dog area and a small dog area. So we are currently in that design process and that would be brought back to you all at a later time. And that is it. So staff recommends that the City Council accept this informational report regarding the parks improvements grant status update. And then we'll take questions now.
Okay, we've got two minutes. If there isn't enough time for questions, Mackenzie, how can council members get comments to you?
They, they can send me an email.
Okay. Comments from staff, Council?
A quick comment.
Oh, please go ahead, Councilwoman Papin.
Yeah, whoever that last staff person was, the PUC cannot revoke the grant. It was voted on by the PUC board, so staff-level person cannot make that decision. And I'd be happy to address it with the San Francisco PUC.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papin. Any other comments?
Good job to our staff.
Thank you, Vice. Thank you, Vice Mayor Oliva.
Well done to the staff as well.
Monterey Park is the railroad tracks right there. It is an area that we're looking at for noise mitigation. So, let's make sure we talk on that. There's absolutely no noise mitigation there from Caltrains at all, period. So, with that, thank you. I see Councilman Holiver.
Yeah, thank you. I think in terms of the dog park, from what I've seen, I agree that Monterey Park is probably the best option if we cannot do Green Hills Park. I know there's the noise issue with the train tracks there, but it is a flat area. It's not really utilized for, the walking and biking paths are utilized, but the open spaces is not. One other idea, I know that's been thrown around in the past, and I'm not sure if it's worth looking at, but the, we used to call it Site 7, basically to the east of the Gateway Development, that's SFO property. I think there's plenty of space there away from where their construction staging is. Could be something to look into again.
Councilman Holiver, it's on my list, especially as SFO wants to move Noise Monitor 8 because it's so noisy, and yet they run construction equipment there all day long. So, I, I think that's another option. With that, we are at 11:01. If there's no further comments, Director Brady, thank you. You guys are moving like crazy. Well done. With that, unless there are any further comments, we are at time. And I thank you all for a very long day and a special council meeting, and good luck to you all. And we'll see you in two weeks. Meeting adjourned.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.